grins and giggles when this topic first came up, but for a lot of people, this is really serious, isn't it?
Apparently, it is. It's a very serious issue in Los Angeles. In fact, our Department of Animal Services told me that they get 50 calls a day regarding roosters. It certainly wakes people up, and apparently, they crow all day long, and it's kind of, it's a noise issue, but it's also an issue related to cockfighting.
Good point. I want to get into that in a minute, but now, as for this ordinance, barking dogs, crowing roosters, to be handled pretty much the same way now? There's a question about Animal Services, of course, having the resources to take on these additional responsibilities.
Right, which is what we've asked them to do. We've asked them to tell us how they could implement this in a tough budget year, but if we can handle barking dogs, we ought to be able to handle crowing roosters. And people need to know that when they call and complain, that they get some kind of response, and hopefully, we address it the same way. You go out, you give people warnings. If it keeps going on, ultimately, it could lead to the removal of the animal from the property.
Well, in fact, this ordinance doesn't limit the number of chickens allowed, only roosters, and perhaps most people know you don't need a rooster for chickens to lay eggs.
Well, I just learned that fact the other day. I did not know that. But those ladies don't need the men to lay the eggs. They only need the roosters to fertilize them. So chickens can lay eggs, so if people want to continue to have eggs for their family and their friends, they don't need a rooster for that.
Male or the species, irrelevant as always, I guess.
You said it, not me.
The, I had to. The ordinance limits ownership to one rooster, of course, but allows up to three under certain circumstances, as we understand it. What would those exceptions be?
Well, under the proposed ordinance, everyone can have one rooster per household, but you could apply to have up to three with a permit. So anybody can apply to have more than one rooster, up to three, but you have to assure the city that they will not be a nuisance to your neighbors.
There's some talk of grandfathering in previous rooster owners. Does this mean somebody who already owns more than three roosters can keep them?
Well, what it means is, if you have three, you will be grandfathered in, but you cannot have more than three. So even if you have more than three roosters right now, you can be grandfathered in only for up to three, and after that, we're not going to allow any more roosters per one property.
You did bring up the notion of cockfighting within the city of Los Angeles. Has this really been a large and growing problem, and is there anything else being done about that issue?
It's a terrible problem. You know, people bring, you know, hundreds of roosters to locations where they engage in cockfighting and illegal betting. It has ties to gang violence, but really, is a very inhumane problem, and it leads to all sorts of other crimes. But we do have an Animal Cruelty Task Force within the LAPD, who right now, go out there and investigate these problems, and this ordinance will help them do that job better. But it's a terribly cruel kind of thing to have roosters involved in.
I saw, I happened upon a cockfight in progress on the island of Bali once, and I can tell you, I never want to see one again. It is just awful, and I can't imagine why anybody would participate in it.
It is terrible, and kids that have to witness that, and many of the kids are around there when the cockfight is going on, again, it's a very ugly, bloody sport. It maims the roosters, and it's really an inhumane way to treat these animals.
Some communities, in fact, have a total ban on roosters. Perhaps that would be appropriate for a metropolitan area like Los Angeles someday, do you think?
Well, I do know that other municipalities have banned roosters altogether. We're looking for something that works within Los Angeles, and we want to give responsible rooster owners an opportunity to have roosters.
During the conversation in council on Wednesday, it was said that neighbors of some rooster owners were really reluctant to file a complaint for fear of retaliation, for example. Does this ordinance address that concern? And what would be the proper procedure for filing a complaint about a noisy rooster?
Well, you know, that's always a problem in Los Angeles. Whatever crime people are reporting, everyone's afraid of retaliation, and again, since these roosters and the cockfighting are associated with gang members, people are even more afraid to come forward. But everything in the city of Los Angeles is able to be, every crime is able to be reported anonymously. You can call the police department, you can call 311, and you do not have to leave your name if you so choose. We want to make sure that people come forward, are protected themselves while they're able to report these crimes.
I know that some dog owners, for example, have found ways to suppress a bark in a barking dog. Have you heard of anything along these lines with roosters, for example?
I haven't. I know that there's some method that can be done to kind of impair the vocal cords of dogs. We're not suggesting that. I've never heard of that for roosters, again, but we want, we think limiting the number of roosters to one per household will certainly go a long way towards reducing the noise in and around residential neighborhoods.
Now, I'm sure most sharp-eyed viewers have already noticed that you are wearing a lapel pin, and it looks suspiciously like a rooster.
Well, you know, just to make sure people don't think I am anti-rooster, I actually think roosters are a great animal. In fact, my name, Han, in German, actually translates to rooster. So my house is filled with the kind of roosters that don't make any noise. I actually collect inanimate roosters in my house.
I've known you and your family going back a very, very, very long way, and I never knew that before. Is that the reason why you collect roosters?
It is, it is. And when people ask me, I say, well, my name, Han, means rooster.
That's amazing. What a coincidence.
Which is why, which is why I like roosters. I want to protect them, and I think this ordinance is going to be good for those roosters in Los Angeles.
And of course, you've gone from goats to alligator, now to roosters. There's almost a trend going here in the 15th district.
It does seem like that. Of all the issues I'm working on, these are the ones that seem to get the most attention. But these are all issues that really involve people in their neighborhoods.
Also this past week, back to a serious subject, there was some question about contracts with the airport, and especially, the airport modernization effort. The committee you chair, Trade, Commerce, and Tourism, reviewed these contract procedures with the airport's executive director, Gina Marie Lindsay. Briefly fill us in, if you could, on the results of that review.
Well, we did. We looked at a couple contracts that were being awarded at LAX, and what everyone should know is that the modernization of LAX, our airport, is so critical. We have not modernized that airport since 1984, when we had the Olympics here, and we built the Tom Bradley International Terminal. We know that other international airports look a lot better, are more efficient, are more effective, are more inviting to the public, and LAX needs to be modernized. So these contracts that we're going to begin awarding on our way to a billion dollars, billions of dollars in airport modernization, need to be awarded in the most transparent, honest, and fair way. So we questioned a couple of the contracts that were awarded recently about the modernization. We feel like Gina Marie Lindsay, the executive director at the airport, is a great person to run that airport. She understands the need to modernize this airport, but we found a couple of areas in the contracting process that could be probably tightened up a bit, cleaned up a bit, so that as going forward, we will have the most fair, transparent, open, and honest process in which to award contracts at this airport. So I think we might make a few changes in the process, but we certainly came away not feeling like anyone had done anything wrong at the airport.
It was suggested at one point that, in fact, Ms. Lindsay might be in for micromanaging by the city council, and I think you don't view it that way.
Well, we don't. We believe that the good general managers should run their departments. We have a series of commissioners that sit also as oversight committees of these departments, but it is our obligation on the city council to provide checks and balances. We are the elected body in the city of Los Angeles, and it is up to us to pay attention to what's going on in every area of the city, and make sure that we are watching the public's purse, and that we're watching and making sure that all things are done fair and honestly.
Well, and we hope that you'll keep coming back and keep us updated on how the whole project is going. District 15, Councilmember Janice Hahn, as always, thanks for joining us on Council Week in Review.
Thanks, Jack.
Again, your Los Angeles City Council voted unanimously to request the city attorney to prepare and present an ordinance restricting ownership of roosters. And we'd like to thank again Councilmember Janice Hahn, and City Planner Betsy Wiseman for taking the time to join us on this week's program. LA City View is the government-access cable channel for the city of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meetings and programming about city department services and events. And you can watch city council--
(music) LA City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
Councilmember Cardenas, Councilwoman Hahn, Councilmember Weisar, Councilmember Labange, Councilmember Rosenthal, who joined us, and Councilmember Smith, and Councilmember Weiss, and Mr. Parks, and Mr. Perry, and Mr. Rayus, and Mr. Parks, who are today. Thank you. Okay. So we're waiting to hear how the body of service is going to handle this. I would call it out. So-- Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the city council meeting for Friday, May 16, 2008, of the Los Angeles City Council. We're here in the John Farrow Council Chambers, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. We are televised live on Channel 35, and we want to welcome our viewers and those who have joined us today live here in council chambers in the audience. We rebroadcast on Channel 35 each evening, also available online through the internet at lacity.org, where you can watch live streaming webcasts of our council meetings, and we have archived footage of our past council meetings there as well. Finally, you can always use your telephone and listen to the audio proceedings of the council by calling council phone at 213-621-CITY. We are, we have our agendas available online 72 hours in advance, as well as here in council chambers and through the city clerk's office. Those detail the items that the council will be bringing up before it. If you'd like to be heard during general public comment, we have cards in the back. Feel free to fill out one of those cards and hand it to one of the sergeants-at-arms. We'll make sure that your comments are included on any items that have not yet received a public hearing in committee. If you have items of a general nature, which are under the jurisdiction of the city council but not on the agenda, you can also give general public comment. Just fill out one of the same cards in the back and mark it "general comment" and hand it to one of the sergeants-at-arms, and we'll make sure that we get that as well. I want to thank the council members who are here on time pursuant to council rules. Councilwoman Gruel, Councilwoman Perry, Councilmember Weston, Councilmember Zein. We're still awaiting five more members to constitute a quorum to begin the official business. I'd like to ask Councilmember Alarcon to please join us, Councilmember Cardenas to join us, Councilwoman Hahn to join us, Councilmember Weisar to join us, Councilmember Labange to join us, Councilmember Rosenthal, Councilmember Smith, and Councilmember Weiss. Mr. Rayus and Mr. Parks are both excused today, not expected, but otherwise, we're expecting all other council members, and pursuant to our own rules, they should be here at 10:00 a.m. In the meantime, we, on Fridays, we often do presentations to honor members of the community, to mark significant occasions, and to honor those who have improved the life of Angelinos. So we will be beginning that shortly. I know we're awaiting Councilmember Weiss and the mayor to join us in just a moment, and we will begin the first very special presentation. So we appreciate your patience while we are awaiting them. Thank you.
Good morning, colleagues. Council President, I'm glad to be joined by my friend Eric Garcetti and my friend Yaki Dayan, because 60 years ago yesterday was the founding of the state of Israel. 60 years ago yesterday, David Ben-Gurion-- Janice, will you join us? Come on up, Janice. David Ben-Gurion announced the establishment of the state in Tel Aviv, and at the time he did that, there were all of 600,000 people-- Councilwoman Hahn is joining us-- 600,000 Jews living in Israel. Today, there are over 7 million, and Israel is a leader in so much of what is great about our world today, but it is just particularly notable that Israel was founded only three years after the Holocaust, 15 years after Germany embarked upon the Final Solution. And at that time, Israel announced that its national anthem would be called Hatikva, which means "The Hope." Well, look at what that hope has become today. It's become an extraordinary reality, and something that all Israelis are proud of, but particularly, all Angelinos are proud of, because every time a representative of the government of Israel comes to Los Angeles, he or she meets the people in this room and comes away convinced that Los Angeles is thoroughly on Israel's side. Nothing has given me greater pride during the seven years I've been here than seeing that. Nothing, I mean, we all know of Eric Garcetti's world wanderings, but nothing has been, you know, personally more impressive to me than seeing the reaction of Councilmember Janice Hahn when she returned from her recent trip to Israel. And so, it's a, it's a great day for the world. I would encourage everyone, one little political announcement. You all heard about this one little sentence that President Bush mentioned in his speech to Knesset. I would encourage everyone here, everyone watching Channel 35, watch the whole speech that the president gave in the Knesset. I watched the coverage on the Israeli channels of that speech. Didn't focus on the one little clause that caused the bruhaha here. It was an extraordinary speech. It was an extraordinary, perhaps, the definitive statement of America's friendship, of the basis of America's relationship with Israel. And we can never let the politics of the moment cause any of us to lose sight of that. So it's a very proud day for Los Angeles, it's a very proud day for the state of Israel. I'd like to ask our great council general, Yaki Dayan, to say a few words, but after, but why don't we wait until we hear from our council president and from Councilmember Hahn?
Well, thank you. I feel very honored, Councilmember Weiss, that you invited me to come up here and stand here as we are celebrating Israel's 60th birthday. And you're right, I have a complete new awareness and love and admiration for the state of Israel. I waited till Israel was almost 60, and I'm almost close to 60, but before I took my very first trip to Israel, I just went there this January. It had been a lifelong dream of mine to go to Israel, and I went with the Port of Los Angeles on a port security trip, and it made me very aware that the tremendous contributions that Israel has made to the world, and certainly, to our country. But we really came away with a much better understanding of security needs, and unfortunately, Israel has written the book on security by your very, you know, necessity to do that. From the time we left LAX on El Al, till we landed in Tel Aviv, and our trip to Haifa on Ashdod, we learned principles of security that I know I brought back, as well as members of the port security team that went with us, that we want to implement here in America, at America's port. But for me, the life-changing trip, the day, which I thought would be Jerusalem, which was, of course, very overwhelming to me to be in Jerusalem, but for me, the life-changing day was the trip to Sderot, where I went to see firsthand what that was like for a village, for a town of people, to be under daily attack from these rockets, and what it was like for kids going to school, or the elderly trying to go to the grocery store, and being in a town where you literally had to see where the bomb shelters were in case you heard the siren and had less than 16 seconds to take shelter before the rocket hit. And I came away realizing that was such a small, really, persona of the people of Israel. I came away with such admiration for the people of Israel for 60 years. They have been oppressed, and harassed, and attacked, and yet, they are resilient, they are brave, they are courageous, they are gifted, and they have something that I think all of us could use in our own personal lives in terms of adversity and what it takes to be a people that, in my opinion, are admired in the greatest way. So great respect I have for the people of Israel, and happy birthday, and we know that you have not only survived, but you have prospered in so many ways, and it was a great joy for me to be there.
Thank you very much. Great speech. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Hahn, for such a beautiful speech, and I know how emotional that trip was for you, and I know that around this horseshoe, almost everybody here has had the chance to visit Israel and spend time there, and to see that firsthand, and to understand the importance of the ties between our city and that great state. For me, it's easy to mark the birthday of Israel because it's the same age as Dennis Zein, so in wishing Israel happy birthday, we also wish Dennis Zein a good 60th year, but--
How many companies has he listed on the NASDAQ?
I don't know how many companies he has listed on the NASDAQ, but not as many as Israel. But for, my experience just coming back from Israel, my most recent trip too, was also--
uh, was, was also, at this moment in Israel's history, we take for granted these moments, sometimes, um, these moments in between, uh, flare-ups of violence. Um, and it was just after I left, of course, that we saw the shooting, um, in the yeshiva. Uh, the ongoing rockets were, of course, there the entire time, kind of the dull background noise of survival. But Israel has survived, and as Janice said, it hasn't just survived, it has thrived. It has become an example, not just in the region, but an example for the world, an example of what the courage of one people can do. Um, but the ingenuity and the dedication and the integration of the Israeli economy and social life and cultural life into the world's life has enriched this entire earth. Um, without Israel, uh, the earth would not be the same place. Without Israel, the United States would not be the same place. And without Israel, Los Angeles would not be the same place. So, we congratulate you on sixty years, um, of what you have accomplished. We look forward to the next sixty years. Uh, may they be years of prosperity, may they be years of peace, may they be years of continuing friendship, not just with your friends across oceans, but may they come closer by to where Israelis live so that that, uh, senior, so that that child may wake up, may walk to school, may walk to a park, knowing that they have the safety and security that all human beings deserve. So, haag zamech, and, uh, for all of us here, we wish you a very happy birthday. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Mr. Weiss, before our Consul General speaks, I just want to add, uh, my congratulations to sixty, uh, years. I've had the pleasure, um, in, in the last several weeks and as we've talked about last several months of celebrating, uh, the sixty years of Israel and that it blossomed from a desert and provides us with cultural, uh, literature and arts and, uh, most importantly, a friendship, uh, between the state of Israel and those of us here in Los Angeles and I think the entire United States. And know that the entire city council here, uh, is supportive of, of what you've done and, and welcome to, to Los Angeles. It's now almost a year, I think, that you have been here in, in Los Angeles.
Almost here.
And, uh, we have appreciated what you have added, uh, to the relationship between the state of Israel and the city of Los Angeles. And with that, please welcome to the council chambers...
Thank you very much. Uh, on behalf of myself, the state of...
And, uh, I'm sorry, just, Mr. LeBange, I'm sorry, Mr. LeBange, your name?
Please. Sorry, as we, protocol isn't...
The bolder mayor.
So, you understand that as a Consul General, but I think what is so great about our history as cities is Eliot is our sister city. Next year, it represents our fiftieth year with that special relationship with Eliot. And I know I'll be going with a delegation there, but it tells you about Los Angeles and its love of Israel and our history, which is deep. And even going back into the history of Los Angeles, it's so fabulously diverse with all its people, including those who are Jewish. So, I'm just proud to salute Israel on its sixtieth anniversary and, uh, wish you all well on this celebration, uh, era. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. LeBange. Mr. Consul General.
Thank you. You know, uh, on behalf of the state of Israel, my consulate that is present here and, uh, and here, uh, thank you very much to all of you. I think that, uh, when I come here, I always think that my job is redundant, having so many ambassadors, wonderful ambassadors that are so eloquent, uh, and they really represent so beautifully the case of Israel. But I think that we are truly proud on what we achieved in the last sixty years, last sixty amazing years. We are telling everybody that Israel is celebrating not its sixtieth anniversary, but its three thousand and sixty anniversary. But in the last sixty years, I think that Israel has managed to contribute so much, not only to itself or to, or to the Jewish people, but to the life of the, of the average American on a daily basis and whomever here uses his cellphone or computer or any medical device, um, Israel is and has been a part of that. And I think this is one of the values that we sacred and we are pursuing, and this is to contribute as much as we can to the welfare of the, uh, of mankind. And I think that, uh, I have to thank you very much. Uh, one old guy told me the story that, uh, sixty years ago, when the state of Israel was, uh, was established, uh, they wanted to celebrate in New York this, uh, this, uh, happy moment. And they, they gathered everybody to the Madison Square Garden, and there were thousands of people waiting to enter to the Madison Square Garden. And he was waiting with, uh, thousands of people, holding the hand of his father, waiting for the gates to be opened. And then the gates were opened, he left his father's hand, and he was running all the way to the front seats. And he was running and running, and he reached the front seats, and then he sees there his father. And he was amazed. He asked his father, "How can, uh, you be here? I'm much younger than you are. I ran all the way, you were there, and you, here you are before me." And his father looked at him and told him, "You know, I was not running by myself. With me were running my parents, my grandparents, the Jewish people and the entire people that supports the Jewish people." And I think that this is so unique to this place, Los Angeles, because Israel is not running by itself. Israel is running with the people of Los Angeles, and we really appreciate and we feel the support that we have from this place. And as President Bush said in Israel, two days ago in the Knesset, he said, "It's not seven million people that fight terrorism and stand in the forefront fight against terrorism, but it's three hundred and seven million people that are fighting this fight." And on behalf of the state of Israel, we appreciate that, we thank you for that, and we'll continue to run together with you. Thank you very much.
Colleagues, I just want to say we have, um, we have sixtieth birthday cake in the back, and Consul General will be there, would love to have you join us.
The cake. Oh, the cake.
It's a big cake.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Weiss. Thank you all, Consul General, Ms. Han and Mr. Garcetti. Thank you. Uh, colleagues, we are going to run through the agenda at this point before we go to our next presentation. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Elecon, Cardenas, Groll, Han, Weezer, LeBange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zein, Garcetti, fourteen members present and a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes?
Mr. Smith moves. Mr. Wesson seconds.
Next is communitary resolutions for approval.
Those will be approved.
Madam President, would you like to go through public comments?
We will take public comment after the presentations this morning.
Item number one is an item notice for public hearing. Community impact statements were submitted from the Greater Valley Glen Neighborhood Council, Greater Griffith Park Neighborhood Council and Hollywood United Neighborhood Council.
Thank you. And we will call that special. We do have cards on that item. Next item?
Next are items number two through six, and those are items for which public hearings have been held.
Colleagues, anyone wish to call items two through six special? If not, uh, Madam...
Uh, Madam President, item number two is a commissioner.
We'll hold that on the desk. Next item? Uh, so we, any other specials, colleagues? If not, uh, call the roll on items three through six. Open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Fourteen ayes.
Thank you. Next items?
Next are items number seven through twenty-four, and those are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
I know we do have cards on thirteen, fourteen, seventeen, twenty-one, twenty-four. Uh, colleagues, any other specials?
Number eleven.
You wish to say that now, or do you want to call it special?
Right.
You want to call it special, or you want to give the...
Sure.
Okay.
And then also, I'm sorry, with all the guests who we had here that I was greeting, I missed, uh, items four and six.
Did you wish to call those specials?
Please.
Okay, we'll reconsider those items in a moment.
Thank you.
Any other specials?
Seven through what?
Well, seven through twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Excuse me.
Eleven, please.
Eleven, okay. Mr. LeBange had called that special, so Mr. Smith as well.
It's okay.
Item eleven.
Aye.
Any other specials, colleagues? If not, Madam Clerk, if you could open the roll on the remaining items, close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Fourteen ayes.
Thank you. Next item?
Uh, Madam President, for the record, uh, I'm sorry, items, uh, next are the special agenda, special meeting.
Okay, before we go to the special agenda, let's reconsider items four and six. If you could open the roll on items four and six, close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Fourteen ayes.
Those items are now, uh, back on the agenda and called special by Mr. LeBange. Next items?
Next is a special meeting.
Yes, please call open a special meeting.
Elecon, Cardenas, Groll, Han, Weezer, LeBange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zein, Garcetti, fourteen members present and a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. First order of business?
Items number twenty-five through twenty-eight are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
I know we have cards on twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-eight. Um, any other special, anyone wish to call item twenty-seven special? If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item twenty-seven, close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Fourteen ayes.
Thank you. Next item?
That's the total for the special meeting.
Thank you very much. Mr. Zein, uh, will be our next presenter. Following Mr. Zein will, uh, be Mr. Wesson.
While we're waiting for Mr. Zein, I would ask that number twenty-seven for reconsideration. I'd like it to be sent to committee.
Oh, was that the... Sorry, they should have, we should have outlined it, yes.
We were talking.
Yes. Thank you. And I did not note it here. Uh, on item twenty-seven, we'll open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Fourteen ayes.
Thank you for catching that, Mr. Smith. Uh, we will send that to committee.
Jobs.
Yes, it'll be referred to Jobs Committee. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Madam President. Somebody very special, please welcome to the city council chambers, a classmate of mine from John Marshall High. You recognize her from a movie made thirty years ago. She was the best dancer at Saint Bernadette's. Chacha de la Gora was her name, but it's Annette Cordona, a great graduate of John Marshall and now a professor at Cal State Norbert Lynch. Give her a big welcome to city council.
Thank you, Mr. LeBange.
All right, here we go. It's the Civilian Career Service Awards for two thousand and seven. And as the Chair of the Personnel Committee, we will be presenting these career awards. Joining me will be Gloria Sosa, the Assistant General Manager, who will be assisting me in the presentations, and our General Manager is away at Humboldt University where her daughter's graduating today.
Exactly.
That's why Maggie Weather is not here for this presentation. Civilian Career Service Awards Ceremony, this year we are honoring seventeen individual city employees and three groups of, for their exemplary service to the city of Los Angeles. In honoring these outstanding employees, we are recognizing all city of Los Angeles employees for the many services they provide with dedication, innovation, courage and pride. The first four individuals are being recognized for providing exceptional customer service. As I call your name, please come forward. And also, we want to find out how many years you've been with the city of Los Angeles. The first individual is the Chief Clerk, Service Retirement Unit, Los Angeles City Employees Retirement Section, Delia El Hernandez. Delia Hernandez, how many years? Thirteen. Delia Hernandez is a fifteen-year member of the city of Los Angeles, a supervisor, counselor for the Service Retirement Unit at Laser's. Is a rare employee who not only subscribes to the idea of providing a superior customer service, but also embodies it and transforms into something truly exceptional. Through her energy, positive attitude and selfless efforts, she takes ownership of Laser's mission, statement and core values. She possesses integrity, dedication to service and a level of compassion that challenges all employees to achieve a comparable standard. She has made it her job to know the clientele she serves and to be part of the counselor that not only provides retirement information, but also does so while maintaining a sensitivity and human compassion toward all she serves. When asked why she takes such pride in her work, she responds, "Members are a part of my extended family, and you always want to treat your family with care and consideration." I thought that was very, very appropriate. Mr. Hernandez, congratulations to you. Thank you and congratulations. Our next recipient, Paul B. Mahoney, Automotive Supervisor, Fleet Services Division, Piper Tech Facility, General Services Department. Paul, how many years with the city of Los Angeles?
Seven and a half.
Seven and a half.
He's a youngster.
He's a youngster, says Gloria. How many years you been with that city?
Uh, twenty-something.
Well, you youngster, twenty-something. How about forty here? Okay. Paul acted on his own initiative, embarked on a project of improving shop efficiency. This he did with stellar results. Consolidated the various databases and using emails as notification method, developed and implemented a vehicle automated preventive maintenance notification system, which is being used in fleet services shops citywide. System has reduced several hours of work to just a few minutes per week. Costly backlogs no longer exist, replacing the vehicle turnaround time with sufficient improvements in overall efficiency. That's not you screaming, is it? All right. One of your fans, okay. Also overdue weekly preventive maintenance packages, uh, percentages have dropped from a high of twelve percent to an average of two point five. Due to the resounding success, the system not only has inherent past inefficiencies been resolved, but it has contributed significantly to General Services' primary mission of providing the best possible service to its customers. That is Paul B. Mahoney, Automotive Supervisor, Fleet Services. Congratulations to you. And if we have, uh, family members that are here for the recipients, please come forward when we call their name. Uh, in addition to the recipient, the family members who are here if they're with the audience. System Analyst Two, Council, CLA, Mayor Support and Information Technology Agency, Ernest You brought your own cheering section here. He's only been here five years, he's got his own cheering section. That's not how we do it. That's not how we do it. We'll come over there. Hey, uh, bring up the banners up here. Bring the banners forward.
Oh, they told me, okay.
Ernest, uh, professionalism, dedication and selfless service has made him the role model for all ITA employees, always looking for ways to improve system performance and integrity from a technical perspective, which provides a more reliable... flowers too. Reliable and productive working environment for ITA customers. Earn numerous commendations and high praise from the mayor and council members in recognition of his impeccable service and skill set. You fixed my computers too, didn't you?
All the time.
Okay. They're always breaking, we're always fixing them. On urgent matters, makes himself available to work after hours and on weekends, no matter how difficult the task, accepts the challenge and delivers. No matter how difficult the task, accepts the challenge and delivers relentless pursuit of excellence, customer service contributes greatly to ITA's mission of keeping its clients happy, not only the clients happy, but his colleagues here in the city of Los Angeles. And my colleague Wendy Groll has some comments to make about our recipient.
And I will be brief because I think we're not following the rules.
No, you're not.
Okay, sorry. But Ernest clearly doesn't follow the rules because he has all these people here to denote. Um, Ernest, uh, my staff wanted to particularly, they said, "You have to go up and speak about Ernest," and they're here, they came from my district office, um, to say thank you to what you do because it's not just a job for you, your partnership, uh, with our offices and your willingness twenty-four seven to do it with a smile, um, because I know all of our offices ask you for something, like, we wanted it yesterday. We want you to fix our computer, we want it done now, and I, I just wanted to be able to thank you. And, uh, Mr. Zein mentioned a lot of the things that you have, have done, uh, but you really have been, uh, an expert on a lot of issues and are beloved by, by many of us as you see all the smiling faces here, um, and, and your cheers. So, I just wanted to present to you, since I'm not following the rules, um, also, a... taking full advantage of this. Oh, okay.
My tires up.
This is a special proclamation in addition to your plaque from all of the council members, Ernest, uh, for your hard work, um, and supporting us in the council, uh, and the mayor's office. So, thank you very much, Ernest, and thank you very much, Dennis.
Right. Bring him up, bring, bring, bring this up, bring this up, bring him up, bring him up. Here we go, okay. He's speechless, it's okay.
Thanks, Ernest.
And, uh, you know, in this day and age when we depend so much on technology, when that's not working for us and we begin to get withdrawals, it's a bad state to be in. And you come up and you help us as quickly as you can, you take your job very seriously, you're focused, and, uh, it's always great to see your, your smiling face, uh, helping us out. So, thank you so much. I'm gonna start calling you the doctor because you fix us from our withdrawals when technology goes down. Thank you so much.
Mr. Rosendahl, I think you wanted to speak too.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Let me tell you something. My staff, the first thing I got in this morning was I had to say some words about you. I said, "Well, who is he?" And everybody puts this up. They're crackberry, you know? They're all addicted to this machine. And thanks to you, they can get it fixed, they can get it moving twenty-four seven. I'm still with my cellphone, I'm getting close to this. Uh, my generation, you know, has bigger thumbs and it's hard to move around, uh, but what you have done... bigger thumbs and it's hard to move around. But what you have done to make the technology not only user-friendly but productive for the city is so awesome that you see this whole place, you know, just adoring your work. So bless you, bless you, bless you. Maybe you could tutor me and help me get from this to that, but bless you, thank you.
Where's your, where's your card file? Where's your Rolodex? Oh, it's upstairs? Mention that, mention that, Bill.
I still walk around and everybody laughs at me. I have a wooden card file box, and in it I have these index cards with the names of the people and the situations. I walk around lugging it, it's about twenty pounds, and everybody laughs at me and they say, "You gotta get into the twenty-first century." But part of me says, "I don't know about that because when the BlackBerry goes down, you know, my card file box still works." So, but I am gonna transfer it all to a BlackBerry when I feel I'm able enough to do it. But a little personal help from you would probably make a difference for me.
Anytime.
Thank you for what you do for all of us. Bless you.
And it shows that you can be five years with the City of Los Angeles or twenty years with the City of Los Angeles and have that spirit of helping and serve the people of Los Angeles and the folks here at City Hall. Our next recipient, Frank A. Navarro, Principal Librarian One, Information Technologies and Collection Division, Library Department. Frank, you ask consistently. Hey, if you're here for the recipient, you can come on forward and stand with us for the photo. If you're here for the recipient, come on down as we call their name. Frank, how many years?
Thirty-two.
Frank has thirty-two years of service with the City of Los Angeles, consistently providing exemplary customer service. And it says thirty-one here, but we're gonna jump it up to thirty-two. That gives you additional two-point-one-six percent of your pension, Frank. To the City of Los Angeles, the Public Library served communities in Los Angeles in a variety of capacities such as children and youth librarian, senior librarian, multilingual services, adult services coordinator. In each assignment, he has been a shining example of professionalism and dedication to public service. Some of the most notable examples of your work, looking out for the customer approach, has been the countless number of young people you have motivated to read, enabled them to perceive a world beyond their communities, in development of a Spanish language collection in all seventy-one branch libraries, and substantially increasing the cultural and education programs for adults throughout the city. Throughout your career, you've worked directly with the public, has conveyed the importance of representing the city in a positive, professional, and helpful manner, and thus, we honor you today. Let's hear it for Mr. Frank A. Navarro.
Sister.
Sister.
Sister, okay, come on up here. You're the head... All right, here we go. All right, what's your announce?
Thank you.
Every year counts. Every year here, it's another two-point-one-six, right?
Yes.
We'd like to get it to two-point-five-oh.
Definitely.
I don't think so. All right, the next individuals being recognized for demonstrating outstanding work, contribution, and dedication to duty. As I call your name, please come forward. And if you have a guest with you or people from your department, they are invited to come forward at this particular time. For Gregory R. Allison, formerly Director of Systems, Systems Division, Officer of the City Clerk. Years of service?
Twenty-four years.
Twenty-four years of service.
I started as an intern at ITA.
You don't even look that old. Twenty-four years of service, look at that.
I feel it.
Started as a, you feel it. Started as an intern. During his tenure with the Office of the City Clerk, Mr. Allison consistently demonstrates outstanding dedication to duty and leadership in his capacity as Director of Systems. With his outstanding technical knowledge and superb supervisory and technical skills, efficiency and quality of the Systems Division's operation increased greatly. The division developed and implemented innovative IT solutions that continue to benefit internal staff, department users, and the public. Some of the accomplishments include, this is amazing what you've done, online ordinance search Karen, you should be up here. Aren't you the clerk? Frank's gone, Mike's gone, you're Thank you. So we got the online ordinance search system, the council meeting video conferencing, the council video streaming project, and the transition to online access to county property ownership records. Made major contributions to the city and thus considered as one of the most valuable and respected managers in the City of Los Angeles. And recently transferred to the Port of Los Angeles. Well, be nice and cool at the port today, that's for sure. Our next recipient, former General Manager, Department of General Services, Alvin Y. Blaine. Alvin retired, look how young he looks. Actually, it's Brett, his son Brett. How many years did your dad have with the city?
I think thirty-five.
Thirty-five, thirty-five years of service with the City of Los Angeles. Is he on vacation now or what?
He's in Hawaii.
He's in Hawaii, okay. Alvin did a great job. Alvin could not be with us today, he's represented by his son, son Brett. Alvin recently retired from the City of Los Angeles after enjoying a distinguished career. Early on in his career, recognized the importance of reducing the city's dependence on fossil fuels and thus protecting the environment. As General Manager of General Services Department, continued his pursuit and through many strategic decisions helped to position Los Angeles as one of the greenest cities in the United States, specifically responsible for turning the city's fleet vehicle into the cleanest and greenest municipal fleet in the nation. Under his leadership, Los Angeles became the first in the nation to test alternative fuel vehicles, reducing the city's reliance on foreign oil by one-point-five million gallons annually. Philosophy and energy reduction extended to other areas which led to the implementation of programs such as the Energy Conservation Program, which focuses on the reduction of electrical consumption in city facilities, and Environmental Preferred Products Program, which established guidelines for purchasing environmentally friendly products. His legacy will continue as the General Services Department moves forward to find more innovative ways to make government more efficient while protecting the environment. Alvin Blaine, a true visionary leader, will be missed, and I make a personal comment. When I was a young police officer, your dad worked at the garage. He started out at the garage for the Police Department and rose to General Manager. It shows those opportunities are there. So congratulations to you from the City of Los Angeles for your dad. Our next recipient in this category, in this category once again... Is demonstrating outstanding work, contribution, and dedication to duty. Robert Freeman, Emergency Preparedness Coordinator Two, Emergency Management Department. How many years?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. Robert is a twenty-five-year veteran of the City of Los Angeles, Chair of the 2007 Annual Emergency Management Workshop with terrific results. Brought together various county, state, and federal agencies for one single purpose, the development and preparedness for the city's executive disaster management team. Overwhelming benefit of the workshop was the exposure to the response and recovery efforts jurisdictions directly impacted by hurricanes Katrina and Rita. The city has taken lessons learned and has begun to realign several of its planning tools, exercise initiatives, and overall emergency operations. These efforts may not have been recognized without the insight of this workshop, which carry him about as a result of Robert's commitment and dedication to the project to keep Los Angeles safe. Robert Freeman, congratulations to you. Our next recipient in this category is Michael Hurley, Librarian Two, Central Library History and Geology, Genealogy Library Department. Michael has been with the Central Library Genealogy Department for thirty-eight years. Has shown extraordinary dedication to duty by practical, single-handedly developing genealogy collection into one of the foremost collections in the United States, recognized as the leader in research sought after by patrons and research alike. Represented Los Angeles Public Library and its collections on a national level, been instrumental in the digitization and finding aids and library resources, making them available to users on the library website. Due to his efforts, the Los Angeles Public Library's collection is considered to be the vast, the must, be a must-visit research collection for family historians throughout the state of California. And all all city residents are invited to come down and visit and get that done for their family and benefits. There we go. All right, our next presentation is for June Legme Merrillade. Legislative and Internal Relations Office of the Mayor, invaluable resource not only for the mayor's legislative and intergovernmental relations team, but for all teams of the mayor's office. Value to the mayor's office and the city as a whole is her ability...
Thank you.
...to make things work. She is the resource that everyone turns to, the person with the answers. It doesn't matter what the subject matter or policy issue, she makes up an answer. Able and ready... I made that up, I made that up, I made that up. I want to make sure you're paying attention. She is able and ready to help, always thinking miles ahead of everyone, as there is no problem that cannot be solved. She is truly the rock that everyone can and does lean on. And June, your years with the city?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven years with the City of Los Angeles.
Four mayors.
Four mayors, all right. June, congratulations. And the whole mayor's staff is here. Here we go. All right, June, twenty-seven, and many more to go. Congratulations. Our next presentation goes to the Parking Enforcement Manager Two, Special Operations Division, Department All right, we're joined by the General Manager. You don't say speak yet, but you will soon. Rita and Mr. Fisher and a whole bunch of DOT folks here. Raymond began, Raymond, how many years with the city? I know you just retired, how many years?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven years with the City of Los Angeles. Raymond began, Raymond began his career with the City of Los Angeles in seventy-one, earned numerous promotions over the years. Currently, well, he's since retired, just recently at Dodger Stadium. I remember you like rented out the stadium. Yes or no?
No.
A part of the stadium?
Part.
A little stadium?
A little.
At the stadium club?
Stadium club.
That's okay. We have intelligence tells us where you're at. We gotta know where to send your pension check. So it's the Parking Enforcement Manager, Department of Transportation, known dedication to duty, manages the Support Service Division, consisted in the metro and valley special operations units. In addition, manages the city school crossing guard program, which has to be a monster program, and the special events unit, which is another incredible operation. Been instrumental in the planning, development, implementation of other enforcement programs such as Disabled Placard Abuse Unit, Private Property Abatement Unit, the School Zone Video Enforcement, to name a few. Additionally, involved in the Democratic National Convention in 2000, part of the management team that negotiated and established the Memorandum of Understanding, an agreement with the passing of the Police Department for the Rose Bowl, where everybody gets to work and see the Rose Parade, and night side New Year's Eve deployment of City of Los Angeles traffic officers and supervisors. So you did so much in that thirty-seven years of service to the City of Los Angeles. And since your General Manager's here, I'm gonna let her say a few words. General Manager, Department of Transportation, Rita, solve all the traffic problems, Robinson.
Well, good morning, everyone, and congratulations, Ray, again, for just a tremendous amount of service to the City of Los Angeles. And as you can see, backed up by an incredible team, staffed by Mirsadadi Assistant General Manager and Chief Jimmy Price. We are so proud. And I'm here to present Ray his thirty-five-year pin, two years late, but I'm not involved. Karen, you need to work on that in the next two weeks, and a certificate from the city just thanking you for your years of service. And I'd like to thank all the traffic officers, all the staff that work so hard in DOT for all of you. Thank you so very much.
And our next presentation goes to the Marine Environmental Supervisor, Environmental Management Division, Harbor Department, Lena Mao DeSantis. Lena, recognized for her work she performed on the Tri-Pac Terminal Expansion Project, the first major capital improvement project in the San Pedro Bay Port in seven years, prepared the required environmental impact documents in record time for approval by the Board of Harbor Commissioners. Focus and organization, attention to detail, and valuable to the project, addressing the first time ever the health risks associated with the terminal expansion project and ways to significantly reduce pollutants, all while addressing increased trade, adding a rail yard, and creating hundreds of jobs at Trade PAC. There has never been so much achievement in such a short period of time. Her work on the project will serve as an example to lead the Port of Los Angeles in its mission to grow green by placing a high priority on responsibility and sustainable growth. And we know forty-five percent of the goods coming to America come through the Port of Los Angeles. I have listened to the mayor say that many, many times. To you, congratulations. And members of the port here. They get to go back to San Pedro where it's gonna be nice and cool today. And our next presentation is for Julia T. Nagamo Nagano, Director of Corporate Communications, Public Relations, and Legislative Affairs for the Harbor Department. Julia is a thirty-seven-year city employee with twenty-eight years in the Port's Public Affairs Division. Known as the go-to person, 2007, in addition to her regular duties, she was tasked with spearheading the Port of Los Angeles Centennial Celebration with a year-long itinerary of special events and programs. Led this multifaceted effort, which included the historical Port Coffee Table Book, Rail Festival, Stepping Back in Time, Historical Tours of Wilmington and San Pedro, and the Port's Entry and the 2008 Rose Parade. The Port's celebration was a huge success, highlighting the awareness of the port to residents of Southern California and beyond. She is to be commended for her career and dedication service to the City of Los Angeles. And because of you, I got to go to Japan and represent the City of Los Angeles and the port because they celebrate their hundredth anniversary. So I got to participate in that parade because of you. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Our next recipient is the Senior Clerk Typist, retired Human Resource Division, Department of Rexon Parks, Bernice Orvii. Bernice, recently retired, thirty-year city employee, being recognized today for her outstanding dedication to duty, distinguished herself early in her city career, evident by the numerous commendations and letters of appreciation she received from both internal and external customers for going above and beyond the call of duty throughout the years. As a testament to her exceptional work ethic and dedication to duty, whether it was working diligently to meet department deadlines or working nights and weekends under stressful conditions to successfully complete the task on hand, is further exemplified by her steadfast tenants' record, whose kind and good-just nature, personality is only matched by her modesty to be commended for a job well done. Bernice, Brother, okay, we can get in here to the family. All right, our next recipient is Chuck Rubin, Senior Management Analyst Two, Tenant Services Unit, Asset Management Division, General Services Department. Chuck, how many years?
A little under twenty.
A little under twenty. Just shy of twenty. In June 2007, the city was faced with an important decision under its current lease to exercise right of first refusal to purchase Figaro Plaza, also known as Figg Plaza. Chuck gathered all key city personnel from the CEO, CLA, City Attorney, Mayor, Bureau of Engineering, General Services, to develop a master plan in the purchase, review, and analysis of the property, and successfully ensuring the collaborative efforts of the various city departments was instrumental in developing a strategy to address this multimillion-dollar property acquisition. According to the mayor and the city council, the document produced due... According to the mayor and the city council, the document produced due to Chuck's effort is the best ever developed for such an acquisition, and since then, we now own Fig Plaza, we now own the building on Broadway.
Public Works Building.
Public Works Building. We now have a city hall in Van Nuys, we now have a Browdy Center in Van Nuys, and more to come.
Municipal Building.
More to come.
More to come.
Alright, so let's hear it for Chuck Rubin, who made that all happen. We have another General Manager who is here recognizing the employee. Come on forward, Mr. GM.
We want to thank Chuck for all of his great work and dedication that he's provided to the city of Los Angeles. He's a great employee, and we're very, very fortunate to have him. Thank you very much.
Picture here, picture here. Alright, picture here. Whoa, back here again, wait. Wait, he's slow again.
Yep.
Okay, back over here now. Alright, thank you, Chuck. Our next recipient is Director of Enforcement Operations, Code Enforcement Division, Housing Department, Domingo Salsina. Domingo, with thirty years of experience in building inspections and code enforcement, leadership over the systematic code enforcement program has helped to establish an organizational culture of accountability, commitment, and respect for residents and landlords. His imprint is very much felt with regard to the habitability and critical life safety issues facing city residents in rental housing. Under his guidance for the last ten years, enforcement program has had a major impact, inspecting seven-hundred-and-eighty-thousand residential units and thus serving over two million residents. It is estimated the program resulted in the reinvestment of over one-point-seven billion dollars into the city's housing stock for building repairs due to cited code violations. You are not only keeping people happy and safe, but you're making a lot of money for the city. Here we are. Now with the amateurs. Now the guy with the video camera. Now you know how Paris feels. Next to be recognized is a group of individuals whose acts of heroism went well beyond their duties and responsibilities. As I call your name, please come forward, and if there's people here with you, please have them come forward. Greg Elbert Carpenter, Integrated Support Services Division, Department of Water and Power. On August third, while fishing, a man fell into the cooling water inlet channel for the Water and Power Haynes Generating Station in Long Beach. The current was so strong that the individual never had a chance to pull himself out of the water and travel over two miles before being spotted by Greg and a fellow colleague. By that time, the man was considerably weakened by the water flow. Without thinking of his own well-being, Greg pulled the man to safety. If not for Greg's heroic feat, the man would have most certainly been sucked up against the intake screens of the cooling pumps, likely resulting in his death. Greg, for saving a human being, we recognize and congratulate you. It's Greg's grandson. And Greg, you have, how many years of service with the city? Seven years. Seven years with the city of Los Angeles. Greg, congratulations and thank you, and to your beautiful family that's with you today. Our next recipient in this category, acts of heroism, we have two individuals, Robert Brunrosto Park Maintenance Supervisor and Carol F. McDermott, Senior Gardener, Solid Resources, Citywide Recycling Division, Department of Public Works, Bureau of Sanitation. On October thirty-first, Robert and Carol were performing a brush growth inspection of city-owned properties along the Lopez Canyon landfill when they witnessed a stabbing of a woman outside her home. They went to the aid of the victim, causing the assailant to flee. They immediately called nine-one-one, provided information on the victim's condition and the suspect's direction of flight. This act of bravery and quick action prevented further injuries to the victim that could have ended in a potential loss of her life. Also, based on the information provided by these two brave individuals, the assailant was apprehended. The LAPD is hiring active and reserve officers. Okay, congratulations to you. Very good. And the next group in this category is Robert Mendoza and Francis Tubal. They're from the Street Maintenance Division, Bay Harbor, Department of Public Works, Bureau of Street Services. Robert and Francis, on April twentieth, Robert, I'm sorry, Ralph, what's his name, Robert, Ralph?
Yes.
How many years with the city?
Twelve.
Twelve, and how about Francis? Huh? Nine, okay, we got twelve and nine here. On April twentieth, two thousand and seven, Ralph and Francis, en route to their next destination, were stopped for a red light in Washington Boulevard and San Pedro Street when they noticed a man trying to get a shopping cart over the railroad tracks. The cart became stuck on the tracks, and when the man bent down to free it, he passed out. Realizing that a train was approaching, Ralph jumped out of the truck and ran to assist the unconscious man, dragging him to safety, while Francis radioed the yard to call nine-one-one for assistance. Their heroic actions that day saved the man's life. Congratulations, Ralph and Francis. And the General Manager is with us.
Thank you, Councilmember Zine. These two guys are just great individuals, and I think it's a testament to their dedication to the city that they made that quick decision and reacted, and resulted in the saving of lives. So congratulations, gentlemen, and thank you for everything you do for the city.
Thank you.
Picture time. Come on up here. Let's squeeze you in here, we don't want you to be high. We have now five individuals, Maurice Donald, Adam Fonti, Gary Fuller, Rudy Ramirez, and John Souths, Electrical Mechanic Supervisor, Electrical Mechanics, and they are with the Integrated Support Services Division, Department of Water and Power. Please come forward. On November second, two thousand and seven, the UFP Electrical Mechanics suffered a heart attack. Maurice, Adam, Gary, Rudy, and John performed lifesaving action on their stricken colleague. From calling and relaying information to nine-eleven operator to checking for a pulse, there was none, to applying CPR and the automatic external defibrillator device, among other things. Their quick thinking and on-the-spot actions resulted in the revival of their colleague, and I'm happy to announce, he is back to work. Congratulations for saving your colleague. And our final recipient has been recognized for recognition from a city department or other governmental agency for extraordinary services, Lorraine Brathwaite, Legislative Analyst, Legislative Assistant II, Council and Public Service Division, Officer of the City Clerk. You, you're always coming around, sign this, sign that, sign this, sign that. Alright, here we go. Is exceedingly knowledgeable in the inner workings and nuances of every council committee. In particular, she has handled one of the most challenging and stressful committees. Mr. Parks? Budget and Finance. She handles your committee, Budget and Finance. It's the most challenging and stressful committee. She has handled this difficult committee with confidence and diligence, even with a significant increase in workload. For her outstanding contributions, she has been publicly praised by a council member named Art Parks, and has received a divisional commendation. Must also be noted that she is a trainer in the Legislative Assistant Training Padre Program, and is a key player in promoting new efficiencies at the division level. Lorraine Brathwaite, congratulations.
And Mr. Zine, Mr. Rosendahl would like to add.
Mr. Rosendahl.
His good wishes, Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes, indeed. Being one of the relatively new kids on the block, but with the Finance Committee and other committees, you have not only been a responsible, reliable glue that holds us together, but you have a personality, and a warmth, and a caring, and a giving, and I know your father, Harold, is shining right down on you now. You are in his image. Bless you for all you do for our great city. Thank you.
We love you. Thank you.
The retire lady goes by.
Oh, and Mr. Parks?
Mr. Parks?
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine, thank you for waking me up. I just wanted to add my voice again, as we meet weekly on the Budget and Finance, it couldn't happen without Lorraine doing what she does. She sits there quietly, but she walks over to you and whispers in your ear, and says, "We're going down the wrong path," which gets you back on the right path, but she is a very, very strong person that gets things done, and again, we would not be able to go through these processes, fifty-two hours of budget hearings, and the last week and a half, getting reports out overnight, getting things done immediately, so that we can carry on the business. And then, it's rare that we have a budget hearing on a weekly basis, it doesn't have ten, fifteen items on it, and those reports just turn out. She had a heart-to-heart talk with me one day about a year ago and said, "If I don't get some help immediately, you're going to be in that room by yourself." And so, we took care of that. And so, no, but she's done a wonderful job, and just so pleased that you're getting this honor, you deserve it, and again, so much of our business as far as our financial issues would not get done without your personal involvement, so thank you.
Since this is the last presentation, very special with Budget and Finance, will we get the Budget and Finance Committee to come forward for a photo? Budget and Finance Committee.
We appreciate the public's patience for the public comment section, we'll be getting to that probably in about one-half hour, just to let people know timewise. And Mr. Zine, would you like to conclude?
I just want to conclude by recognizing all of our city employees. This is an annual appreciation that we in council show to our dedicated city family, whether they have two years, five years, or up for retirement. To all the recipients, congratulations to your families, we appreciate what they go through, we know the effort that you put in for the people of Los Angeles. And to all city employees, this is an annual recognition, you're all eligible for it, strive for perfection, strive to do well for the people of Los Angeles. Mr. President, thank you for indulging us in the time to recognize our city family. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Our next presentation will be CD ten, and great council member from the tenth district,
Thank you, Mr. President and members. Mr. President, you call my name, and then all of a sudden, the room clears out. I thought I was a tad bit more popular than that, but I do want to commend all of the city employees. We are only as good as the staff that we surround ourselves in, and this is the greatest city on the planet, and we're blessed to have the greatest staff, so I too give them the honor that they deserve. But on this day, I just wanted to highlight a police precinct station, its captain, its lieutenant, and its members, individuals that I've had the pleasure to work with for the past two years, two and a half years. When you think about the Los Angeles Police Department, you think about them fighting crime, you think about them putting their lives on the line, and yes, they do that, and I respect you so, so very much for that. But a lot of things, what people don't understand, they really do more than that. In the community I represent, we do have some difficulties with some economically depressed areas, we have some gang problems, so what we do is we created an agency called Project Save that does a variety of things to keep young people off the street and involved in positive things so that they can become productive adults. No way would my Project Save be successful if it wasn't for the work of the gentlemen that stand behind me. We have had an overnight fishing trip with kids, and Captain Craig and his people were there. We have had a flag football league, Captain Craig and his other officers were there. I asked them to come today, because a few months ago, or earlier this year, we honored the winning basketball team in this midnight basketball league that we put together. You have to think about this, we had gang intervention agencies from throughout the city of Los Angeles. We had twice a week rival gangs from throughout the city of Los Angeles came to the district that I represent, the area that Captain Craig protects, gang members from Janis Hahn's area, Bill Rosendahl's area, my area, Mr. Parks's area, and we only had one minor incident. And I have to say that if it wasn't for the participation of Southwest, the men and women from that station, that it might have been a disaster, but it wasn't a disaster. And they would come by to patrol, they would come by just to visit, they would come by to watch the games, and at the end of the day, after we crowned a champion, the Police Department said, "We're gonna, we're gonna see how good these guys really are, so we're gonna take our all-star basketball players, and we will play the all-stars from this midnight basketball league." I have to say to you that out of all of the games that we had all year, that was the most exciting game. It was not decided until the last three or six seconds of the game, and it was a three-point difference in the score. I will not tell you who won the game, because the Los Angeles Police Department knows where I live, and I don't want to say on television that they got whooped. I don't want to do that, so I'm not going to tell you that they lost. It was probably one of the best games that we had all year, and I just can't say enough for, you know, thanking you, and I hope that we will be doing this again, and again, and again. Not once have I came to Lieutenant Whittingham or Captain Craig and asked for something and have been refused. These men are two of the most creative minds within the Los Angeles Police Department, and I am blessed to have them in the district I represent. So what I want to do today is to present to Cap a Certificate of Appreciation, and to Lieutenant Whittingham, a Certificate of Appreciation. Now, come up here, Lieutenant, a little bit. Now, come up here, Lieutenant, a little bit. Now, this is a pretty big fella. I am glad that you are on our side, and even though you are LAPD, if I see you late at night, I'm going the other way. All right, because this guy is something else. I want to present a photograph to all of the team members who participated in that great game, and we also want to provide them with certificates as well. But at this time, I'd like to ask my friend, my captain, to say a few words. And lastly, Captain, thank you so very much for helping Project Save be the successful program that it is. Ladies and gentlemen, give a round of applause to our captain, James Craig.
Thank you. Thank you. It is truly an honor. I'm very humbled by accepting this award, but certainly we could not have done it without the leadership of Councilman Weston's office, his staff, the men and women at Southwest. We are truly about the business of building relationships, and because of those relationships we build on a continual basis, we have peace. I look forward to the future. I would tell you, and I know Councilman Weston talked about who won the game, we both won. It's almost like the Detroit Pistons, and I know I'm, I might be talking out of line, but we both won. Relationships were built because of that activity in the evening. And again, I just want to thank my staff for the work they do day in and day out because really they make a difference, our youth make a difference, and Councilman Weston and his staff. So, thank you so much.
Mr. Rosendahl?
Shout-out comments. You know, we're all connected in this great city, and the fact that our districts all blend together on certain issues and certain circumstances is real. And your guys' leadership there is a blessing to all of us in this city. Safety is our number-one concern, and your sensitivity to how these issues blend together is of great value to us. Bless you and thank you.
Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Oh, before, Bill, you should know that I was really pleased that we had Stan Muhammad and Venice 2000 from your district participated in this league.
My folks in Venice have brought it up more than once about the beauty of the coordination and the cooperation and working together, and that's where my energy is coming from, the street where we know the actions are, and the coordination cooperation is the best. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to rise, and really concerning me, Mr. Weston was talking about his captain, and the last time I went by Southwest is located in the 8th District. I just wanted to bring that up. And Captain Craig was there. I just want to bring that up. But we are pleased with what's going on at your midnight basketball. In fact, we replicated, in fact, we call it the Moonlight Basketball League at Nickerson Gardens, and Miss Hahn and I were over there the other day. And for the first time, they invited a team from Wilmington who played and had one of those buzzer-beaters kind of games, and it was a refreshing environment in Nickerson Gardens to where they're doing their thing replicating your league. And so, we want to say it does work. Several hundred kids are there playing ball, people that are there being spectators and being a part of the solution versus being a part of the problem. But I just wanted to clarify, unless Southwest moved recently, that they are in the 8th District, so.
Mr. President, I really want to thank Councilmember Parks, but Councilmember Parks has been so involved in the budget, and he has not been here. So when you were gone, I took Southwest. It's now in my district. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weston. Now, I'd like to recognize Mr. Alakon for our next presentation from Council District 7.
As you know, every month I recognize an organization for promoting certain aspects of safety, particularly as it relates to kids. So today, we're recognizing an organization that's been around a while. In fact, I think most of you know them, but they keep doing new and innovative things and continuing the message of safety in our streets. Before introducing them, let me say that just yesterday morning, a 19-year-old man from Beverly Hills, Tristan Mays, was killed at 2:40 a.m. when his car slammed into a big rig in Burbank. On just April 9th, a 17-year-old teenage driver, Cody Murphy, was killed in Malibu. One of his passengers was critically injured, and two others sustained lesser injuries that required them to go to the hospital. Cody's blood alcohol level was more than twice the legal limit. On April 25th, the teen boy in Silverlake crashed a car into his home, trapping his father underneath his vehicle. That's just in the last couple of weeks. So, these are just a few examples of the tragic car accidents that occur every day, many with teen drivers who are less experienced and more susceptible to driving mistakes, the worst being, of course, drinking and driving. Young drivers make up only 6.7% of the total driving population, but the same young drivers constitute 20% of all alcohol-related crashes. DUI-related vehicle collisions to be the number-one cause of death among teens between the ages of 16 and 18. In 2004, 71 teens between 16 and 18 were killed, and 747 were seriously injured in just Los Angeles County due to drug and alcohol-related crashes. So today, we're here to honor an organization that is trying to reduce that number each and every year. Today, we're here to honor Safe Moves and their program specifically, Wheel Smarts, which aims to cut down on these tragic accidents. Safe Moves is obviously a nonprofit, as I said, most of you are aware of them, founded in 1983 by Pat Hines after the death of a friend in a car-on-bicycle accident. They were in fact training for the Olympics. Safe Moves is a nonprofit organization recognized as the leading authority in traffic safety education in the country. It is endorsed by the California Highway Patrol, Los Angeles Police Department, Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, the Police Association of Los Angeles County, and the California Office of Traffic Safety. Didn't know that, did you? Safe Moves has several education programs, including Wheel Smarts, which we are recognizing today, Car Smarts, Kids in Cars, Food Smarts, Money Smarts, and Cyber Smarts. So as you can see, they have greatly diversified, but their message is the same in terms of educating young people to lead more safe lives. Wheel Smarts is the program we wanted to recognize today. Wheel Smarts has created an innovative approach to driver awareness for middle and high school students in Los Angeles. The program consists of workshops and interactive exercises allowing students to examine mob motor vehicle crash sites. Students are provided an opportunity to discuss how the crash happens and why the crash happened, giving them a better understanding of how the crash can be prevented. And yes, that is my cellphone. I apologize. I have a short video that we'd like to play on Wheel Smarts, and then we'll introduce the honorees that we have here. If we could have the video now.
For some, this story hits close to home. A star athlete with a scholarship for college killed by a drunk driver.
For it just to be crushed in just one moment, just because, you know, the decision somebody made to drink and drive, you know, it's not good.
This story came from one of Safe Moves' teen DUI prevention theater groups. Safe Moves is teaming up with middle school and high school students to teach others about the dangers and consequences of driving under the influence.
What we really strive to do is to give students the opportunity to write and perform their own project, whether it's a play, or a music video, or a video, or a public service announcement.
Each project is unique and inspired by students' ideas and feelings about driving under the influence.
This program helps them because it gives them an avenue for their voice to be heard, and it also allows them to possibly prevent something from happening in the future.
The message is the most important part of the program, and young drivers are taking notice.
They understand that if that occurs, then their life isn't going to be the same. They're going to have that burden of, you know, taking someone's life based on their wrongdoing of drinking and driving.
It might not happen to you, but it might happen to somebody you know, and I just feel like, you know, us as a team is getting involved is a great thing, and I'm definitely not going to drink and drive.
The program is fully funded by the Office of Traffic Safety, and it's a great way to start saving lives. For Time Warner SoCal News, I'm Jessica Losales.
Members, this is a program that works, and we owe an incredible debt of gratitude, and I'm sure dozens and dozens, if not hundreds, if not thousands of people owe their lives to a woman who has promoted safety for 25 years. She's the woman that started this program 25 years ago, and she continues to push to protect young people in new and innovative ways. It's with great pleasure that I present this resolution in support of the work that Pat is doing. I present to the City Council, Pat Hines.
You know, I enjoy my work greatly, and it's with the support of the city of Los Angeles I'm able to continue it, but I'm only a small part of the picture. The kids behind me today are the ones that make these programs work. We cannot lock kids up, punish them, threaten them to change behavior. The behavior changes are going to come from them, and the kids behind me are only a few of the hundreds and thousands of kids who are supporting this project and are standing up and saying, "We're going to make change." So I'm here today not only to accept this award on behalf of Safe Moves, but to honor these teens behind me who have challenges every single day and have taken this project on and taken it to heart and are making the differences in everyone's life. In fact, we've produced over 100 plays that have been seen by over 100,000 kids, but it's these kids that are making the difference. So I'd like to take an opportunity to introduce them and have them acknowledged as well.
Yes, we have representing Locke High School with Ms. Brooks, students from Locke High School. Would you like to say something?
I'm honored to be here, and we were really honored that they accepted, invited us to be a part of this program because Locke High School, going through the struggle that they're going through, really opened up their minds in understanding the dangers involved of DUI and being teens DUI, especially during prom night for our seniors. And we put together a student film in regards to teen DUI and prevention called What If. And these are the students that wrote their own scripts, their own storyboard, they acted in their scenes. These were the students that also helped produce the film and making everything possible for this program, and it really works. Our seniors took it in vain, they took it under the notion that they want to be more careful because we don't want to lose none of our children. They are our future, and they know that. They're very bright and intelligent students there at Locke High School, and these are the ones that produced that film to make other students understand the danger of DUI.
Having grown up going to faith-based and public schools, it's, I'm very pleased that we also have representatives from Sacred Blood School. Faith-based students also need this education, and so we're very pleased that Ms. Bonilla and Ms. Pasqua are here on behalf of Sacred Blood as well as some of the students.
It's great to be here, and it's so great that we're acknowledging Safe Moves today because it's really, it's an eye-opener for the kids to see some of these videos that show these teens drinking and driving and some of the consequences because of those actions. So it's just great to be here and to have these kids acknowledged for their efforts and their good work. Thank you.
I thought those were the students. I guess I am getting older. Let me say that Dennis Zine and I actually met as board members for Mothers Against Drunk Drivers, and so it's been a longtime passion. I think that was over 20 years ago. And so, Pat, we greatly appreciate the work that you're doing. You are saving lives. We won't know it, but we know that the numbers will drop, and in part, that's because of the tremendous work that you're doing. So continue, keep it up, and I, we, I do want to point out that this program is very heavily involved in my district as well, but these were the programs that were available to come to City Council, and it also gives you an opportunity to know that they're working in your district. If you would like to work with schools in your area, please feel free to contact Pat Hines, and my office will be happy to work with you on establishing that contact. Otherwise, there are brochures that have been handed out by Safe Moves. Please look them up. Let's continue to make our streets safer and save kids' lives. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alakon. Our next presentation is for Councilwoman from the 9th District, Ms. Perry.
And this won't take long, but she is an important woman, and I wanted to recognize Barbara Young, who is a consultant to the California State University System, coordinating Cal State's African-American Community Outreach Program. This is a program that is part of the Cal State University's African-American initiative, a comprehensive program aimed to recruit, enroll, retain, and graduate more African-American students in the Cal State University system. One component of the initiative is the CSU Super Sunday, which is an annual outreach effort to students and family throughout churches. This effort involves the chancellor, the trustees, board members, and 23 CSU campus presidents, and they come together and speak from a pulpit throughout the city and county in an effort to inspire students to prepare themselves for college, and it was the third year of implementation, and they have definitely seen an increase in enrollment. Now, Dr. Young is an accomplished woman with a master's degree and doctorate from the University of Southern California, but I brought her here today because of her remarkable commitment to the betterment of young people, not here, not just here in Los Angeles, but across the state and the nation. In 1991, Dr. Young created and founded the Alpha-Omicron Middle School Mentoring Program that involved 24 8th-grade African-American girls from two middle schools in Long Beach, California. The effort was implemented without funding and through personal efforts and resources of Dr. Young and 12 other African-American women professionals who mentored these eight girls for four years. The program became a national model for Lambda-Kappa-Mu sorority. So it's with great pleasure that I recognize her here today, and I would ask that all of you here give her a big round of applause, and it's well-deserved.
Thank you, Jan. I'd like to say to all the council members, I am very pleased to accept this recognition today, but I stand on the shoulders of a lot of faculty, students, and most importantly, our chancellor, Charles Reed, who's been absolutely the inspiration and the innovator to help us move this agenda to increase the enrollment of more African-American students. So I want to thank you for this acknowledgement, but it's to the president, the board of trustees, the students and faculty who all work together in this effort, and thank you so very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perry. Our next presentation is from Council District 2, Councilmember Wendy Gruel.
Can I knock it over? How are you? Good. Thank you. And we have a microphone there, so. Thank you, colleagues, and thank you, Mr. President. Today, I'm proud to have with me, I think for the fourth or fifth time, I think that, is it close to that maybe at least, Cynthia Toussaint, who is here with me today in honor of Women in Pain Awareness Day. Cynthia has taken the fight of making people more aware of the medical pain that women suffer who are not able to get the correct diagnosis for their pain due to bias or ignorance. Cynthia founded the Organization for Grace, dedicated to addressing the disturbing trend by empowering women to become better advocates for their pain care, informing healthcare professionals about the gender disparity in pain treatment, and educating public policymakers. Cynthia was left bedridden for nearly a decade because she was told by her doctors that her pain was not real. She has survived two catastrophic diseases for 25 years in order to tell her story for those who do not have a voice. Various studies have found that women are more likely to suffer from chronic pain diseases, suffer more severe pain, and tolerate pain less well than men. Despite a growing body of information about chronic pain, however, many women still report that their doctors often dismiss their pain as being hormonal or all in their head. Too often, the recommended treatment is sedatives, antidepressants, or referrals for psychiatric counseling. In short, women hurt more and are helped less. It is estimated that 20 to 30 million women are challenged daily with persistent pain in the United States. Without proper medical treatment, this pain often leads to a lifetime of physical and emotional distress, disability, financial ruin, social isolation, and depression. According to the... According to the American Chronic Pain Association, more than 50 million people in the United States suffer from chronic pain. We lose nearly $100 billion due to the reduced productivity, sick time, and medical costs. Doctors must understand that women's pain is tactile, not psychological. And, you know, women are socialized to attend more to their physical appearance and are more likely than men to have healthcare providers assume that they are not in pain if they look physically attractive. Medicine's focus on objective factors and its cultural stereotypes of women combine to leave women at greater risk for inadequate pain relief and suffering. Days like today provide us a great opportunity to pause and examine our healthcare systems to work on raising ethical awareness about the current biases that are institutionalized in our medical care. As part of For Grace's work in the community, they will be hosting a conference on May 30th at the City of Hope focusing on how gender differences affect treatment of pain, helping instruct medical professionals and women in pain to be stronger advocates. Cynthia is one of those people who has been an inspiration to me. Every time I meet her, every time I see her and talk to her, she is someone who keeps going and keeps speaking out for women. And she ran for political office in the last couple of years. She said, "I'm going to take it to the next level." She is someone that really is an inspiration to us and many other women and so it is my pleasure to thank Cynthia Toussaint of For Grace and what she's doing for the Women in Pain Awareness Day. So, I'd love if you'd give her a great round of applause and to hear from Cynthia Toussaint.
Thank you, Wendy. I'm overwhelmed, really humbled and honored to be here and whenever For Grace calls your office, the answer is yes. And we'll be back. Thank you. And I want to thank everybody here at the LA County City Council. Wow, you said it all. I know a lot of you and I know you've heard my story and Wendy just summarized it really well. Briefly, I was a 21-year-old ballerina 25 years ago when a minor ballet injury triggered the chronic pain disease reflex sympathetic distribut, also known as the suicide disease in my right leg. For the first 13 and a half years of my illness, all of my HMO physicians told me that my physical problems were all in my head. As a result of that neglect and abuse, I spent 10 years bedridden and for five of those years, I don't know if you know this, I was unable to speak while the RSD ravaged my vocal cords along with the rest of my body. In 2002, I founded the LA-based nonprofit For Grace originally to raise awareness about RSD and I'm happy to say, we feel that we've accomplished that mission. We have had worldwide media running about RSD airing worldwide, I said that, for about two years now. So, we have expanded our mission to ensuring the ethical and equal treatment of all women in pain. The inspiration for this came from a great woman, Diane Hoffman, who will be at our conference speaking. She wrote a report that was published in the Journal of Law, Medicine, and Ethics called "The Girl Who Cried Pain" that I read in 2002 and I was like, "Whoa," it was the last piece of my puzzle. And I learned from that report and many, many subsequent reports that we women in pain are predisposed to all of the chronic pain diseases. We feel pain more intensely than men and surprisingly, we have a lower pain threshold. However, when we report our pain to our physicians, we are told that it's hormonal, all in our heads. We are given sedatives along with psychiatric counseling, whereas men are much more likely to be believed and to be given painkillers. I want equal treatment for all women suffering pain in this country and to be more precise, I want better care for everyone in this country who suffers pain. We can do better. And I want to mention that this beautiful resolution is shared by State Senator Sheila Kuhl and County Supervisor Zavviar Slosky in their respective districts. So, we have with you, Wendy, now an awful lot of legislative support saying that May 30th, 2008 is indeed Women in Pain Awareness Day and we are partnering with City of Hope and the Southern California Cancer Pain Initiative to host our inaugural Women in Pain Conference, Gender Matters. This will be a groundbreaking conference for a number of reasons. First, we're going to put women in pain with their healthcare professionals in the same room. It's never been done before and we're already breaking down barriers, which is wonderful. And being somebody who comes from a performance background, we're going to be using a lot of creativity. We're having a world-class harpist healer, so we're using music therapy and we also will be having an art therapy breakout session. And then my favorite part, I think, of the conference will be after lunch when we premiere our brand-new Women in Pain Public Service Announcement featuring my brother-in-law, actor Jack Coleman, who happens to be the star of NBC's Heroes. So, I do suggest anybody who runs a nonprofit, have a celebrity in the family. It's really nice, it helps. And then we're going to have a dramatization with actors who will depict the typical unfortunate doctor-patient appointment and then use our pain expert audience and make that appointment go so much better with really wonderful communications at both ends. So, it's going to be a great event and then we're going to take the show on the road, as they say. So, thank you again, Wendy. You're my hero today. Thank you. And we're helping women in pain. Thank you for being a part of it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And I'd like to recognize from the 6th Council District, Councilmember Tony Cardenas for our next presentation.
Thank you.
Sorry.
It's my pleasure and honor to give this resolution today to the CATS organization and no, it doesn't have to do with cats and dogs, it's an acronym. It doesn't have to do with animals. It has to do with our most precious people in our community, which is our children, but they also service women and adults as well, but they do focus on children. But let me tell you what they do. The center treats victims of sexual assault, gathering evidence from both the victim and the perpetrator. They focus on children, but have helped all age groups. They work very closely with the Van Nuys and Foothill LAPD and beyond the San Fernando Valley. They serve all victims wherever they come from if they show up at their door. In 1997, the Children's Assault Treatment Services was founded in response to a community need by Dr. Ed Lauder, treating 112 victims in the emergency department of the Northridge Hospital Medical Center. The CATS organization is open 24 hours a day, seven days a week. For example, the people standing behind me are some of the nurses and support staff. Some of them were up until 4 o'clock this morning, working on 12 cases within 12 hours. That's the kind of dedication that they have. But equally important, I need to remind all of us to understand this, this CATS organization is constantly in jeopardy. Unfortunately, our society and our governments don't value them, so it appears that we don't value them enough to give them the security in knowing that they're going to be in existence for a long time. When I met them, Kathy Adams will speak in a few minutes, when I met Kathy Adams, she was really scared and concerned because the building where they were at is part of a hospital and the hospital sold the building and they were concerned that the new owner might not have them anymore or perhaps would raise the rent to a point that they couldn't afford. I just want to say thank you to that developer. He gave the CATS organization, along with the new owner beyond his ownership, Church on the Way, gave them five years of free rent. In addition to that, the Church on the Way director told me last year that he added an additional five years of free rent to the CATS organization. So, they're here out of the kindness of their heart and their givingness and their wonderful work that they do to protect and help our precious children who've been violated. And that's something that nobody should have to go through. No one should ever have to cross that situation in their life, but it happens unfortunately. Here is an organization who gives them the care and the need necessary to provide for them as victims, yet at the same time do the crucial work of making sure that the rape kits, for example, that those rape kits are properly documented and put together so they can prosecute the perpetrators. They do critical work on behalf of the City of Los Angeles. They do critical and precious work by working with these young victims and families and it's important for us to understand that we should always keep an eye on this organization to be aware when they ask for help, we need to be there to give them help. Unfortunately, they're likely to be needed for many, many years to come, but as long as they're needed, I think it's incumbent upon all of us to give them the support that they need. So, at this time, I'd like to ask Kathy Adams to come forward and say a few words on behalf of the organization.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Cardenas. We are very honored to receive this award and also honored that my staff here is being recognized. There's three other registered nurses that are also sexual assault nurse examiners and aren't with us today, but other than the three, this is our group. And our two office managers that are also patient advocates and also our interpreters when we do cases. So, it's this small group that takes care of the San Fernando Valley, the Santa Clarita Valley, 24/7, and we have seen over 7,000 cases of sexual assault, sexual abuse that have come through our doors in the last 10 years. We've had a wonderful relationship with LAPD and with LA County DA's office and I feel like we're really making a difference in the lives of the victims, getting them services after their traumatic experiences, making sure that there is counseling available to them, treating them in a manner when they come to us in crisis to help them through that time, but also importantly, collecting evidence that can be used in the court to help prosecute these perpetrators and hopefully someday get those numbers down so we're not seeing 7,000 victims in 10 years. So, thank you very much and we really value your support. We know that we really did not have a place to go. We're a nonprofit organization and we did not have a home and we didn't have the budget to have that monthly lease that we were going to have to do and thank you, Councilmember Cardenas, for making sure that we can continue on for many years.
Thank you.
Mary Ann, say something?
Thank you. I'm Mary Ann Lakey. Thank you so much for having us here. I'd like to say sexual abuse is a subject that we don't like to talk about. We're usually in the back, in the dark, and being here, being in the light, we appreciate someone who supports us and understands what we do and the importance that it has. And that means so much to all of us. Our job is very stressful, but it's very needed and it is with your support and all the help and just the marvelous understanding that you have of what we do and the difference we can make. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Once again, thank you all for participating in this presentation. It's important for us to understand, as she said, they're behind the scenes, this is the kind of thing that nobody wants to see or deal with, but they deal with it all the time. Just to remind us that their organization saw over 700 patients last year alone, over 700 patients. One is too many. 700 people being treated at this organization, it is critical, it's crucial that we be there for them when they need us and the least we can do is give them this resolution and say thank you so much for your tremendous heart, your service and support to these victims and to the entire community of Los Angeles.
And we're now going to take up item number two, please, Madam Clerk.
Item number two is a commission appointment of Mr. Paul H. Turner to the City Ethics Commission.
Mr. Turner, you're a patient man. Thank you. You'll learn that in the Ethics Commission. Counselmember Gruel.
Thank you. I just wanted to speak, thank you, Paul, for your patience to have been here, as is West, the public. But you're an excellent appointee and one who's very familiar with the city and particularly serving on the Ethics Committee, which is critically important to, we know in the City Council and to the public at large. They're very cynical about how things are done and want to have as much transparency as possible. And I think we look to you as you go in this commission with a fresh eye about how the Ethics Commission should operate, what are their priorities, how do we ensure that items are considered on a quick fashion so that if there are any problems, it doesn't happen two, you don't hear about it two years later. And so, I think the Ethics Commission has been a great partner though in, as we look at some of the absent, not in the absentee, gosh, all of a sudden, Mr. Roosevelt, I was forgetting what it is, the second, I'm having a senior moment, a pre-senior moment. In fact, you have two people on the ballot and you just vote, or three or four people and an instant runoff voting.
Oh, instant runoff.
Thank you very much. Okay, got me. Instant runoff voting and some of the others, you know, public financing, some of those issues that are going to be tough discussions within the Ethics Commission. But I wanted to say to my colleagues that Paul is a great addition to the Ethics Commission and we look forward to working with you. Thank you. Sorry for my pre-senior moments.
Thank you. There's no other speakers on the queue. You were interviewed in the committee and answered all my questions, so we'll take the vote. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
You got it. Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Turner. And now we have public comment.
Mr. President, really quick, the special meeting needs to be recessed and items on the special meeting agenda that were called special needs to be continued to regular meeting.
Without objection.
Without objection.
That's right. Now we'll do public comment. And the first individual is David Bell. David Bell for public comment.
Hi, my name's David Bell. I'm here, I'm a member of the East Hollywood Neighborhood Council and I'm here because I got an email last week saying, you know, "Come to the City Council Meeting, it's the last chance." I guess they had some kind of budget meeting about the funding for the neighborhood councils and nobody from the neighborhood council showed up. So, I just want to say, I wanted to show up today and to say, you know, in East Hollywood, we've got, we've got basically a population roughly the size of Flagstaff, Arizona that we represent. We have 15 people on the council, all of us are volunteers. I'm taking time off from work today to come down and talk and to say that, you know, I mean, we need the funding and you're basically getting a bargain. I mean, we have, you look at, I looked at Flagstaff, Arizona on the internet, they've got 700 acres of parks. In East Hollywood, we have one park that is basically a city block that doesn't have a tree, a blade of grass, it's a dirt lot. I don't even know. It's on the freeway, it's Freeway Park, 101 freeway as far as I know. There's Barnesdale Park, which is a beautiful park, but it's an art gallery on the top of a hill. I mean, it's not a place to go play baseball or soccer. The kids in our neighborhood play in the streets. And we have 15 people volunteering on the neighborhood council, $50,000 a year. We're new, we just got certified, we're trying to figure out how to get the money spent, but we need the money. It's less than a dollar per person in our neighborhood and I think that's a bargain. You've got 15 people all volunteering, they can't all be here today, but I wanted to definitely put us down on the record for the East Hollywood Neighborhood Council that the funding is worth it. It's something that we would really like to see continue and we're doing a lot of good work in the neighborhood and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Zumadog.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, City Council. Good morning, City of Los Angeles. Thank you to the staffer, the fire department official. They asked me if I was going to run for mayor. I'm still thinking about that. It does make people nervous. I might put my name on the ballot just for the people's choice, for the option. And now also, I'd like to discuss, coming up later, please pay attention to item number one, people at home watching, it's about the mayor's budget and if you read the LA Times, David Zanheiser yesterday and Mayor Sam from Mayor Sam's blog, Michael Higby, they helped me create a blog post about the budget. I'd like everybody here to read it if you can during presentations. Go to zumatimes.com because they found $90 million of, they call it budget dust, is that what I understand? Oh, my gosh, they called it budget dust. So, first what they just did, people, they said, "We have to have Prop S," which means you're going to have a tax on your phone and internet. That's something new. "Oh, we have to triple your trash collection fees." "Oh, we have to have meetings on new ways to come up with new taxes and fees." "We have to cut services." They threatened to cut police and fire services and all types of things and firing people across the board. Now, they say at the last minute, "Oh, we found $90 million at the last minute. Oh, nobody knew. It's called budget dust. Oh, spending's back on. Let's open the libraries on Sunday and reinstate all the spending." Hell, no. Okay, now let's not be childish about this. This is a one-time, with the surplus money, David Zanheiser from LA Weekly, I learned, surplus from the first enalameda is a one-time money intake and also the...
Excuse me, this is, item number one is the presentation of the budget.
Well, this is about overall, an LA Times article about, okay, I'll save it. So, tune in for item number one and let's see, also, neighborhood council, Zumadog says it is a racket as Enrico violation racketeering and I say that we have some elections coming up. Please look very closely at that and yes, again with...
Mr. Dog, Mr. Dog, Mr. Dog. Item number one, we're going to take after public comments, so you may want to fill out on the card for item number one.
Okay, so can I redo my public comment then from the start without this stuff?
No, if you want to do a public comment... No, if you want to do a public comment, you've done that, now you want to talk about the budget, that'll be out of number one, you can fill out under the card for that.
Oh, you're starting it right now?
No, we're not. We're still on public comment, but your time's over. Thank you, Mr. Dog.
I'll let more to say later, y'all.
Well, I'm sure you will. Mr. Oscar Johnson. Oscar Johnson. Arnold Sachs.
Thank you very much. I'd also like to make a discussion regarding, something brought up by Zumadog, regarding the trash fees that have been requested to raise by the mayor to pay for police officers, and as I spoke on last Friday before I was interrupted by the city attorney, regarding the Sunshine Canyon landfill pact that you've just entered into with the county. The fact is, is that the mayor's looking to increase the cost to have you pay, that you pay to pick up your trash, yet the county is not counting 6,600 tons of garbage that's going to be disposed of at the Sunshine Canyon landfill. You can read about it if you look up the county agenda from June, I believe, 15th of 2006, where they doubled the intake, but they only came up with 66, they came up less than 6,600 tons of trash. That comes to like 300, between 330 and 440 garbage trucks that aren't going to pay fees, yet you're being asked to triple your trash fees, so when you're writing that check out, it's like the eagle flies on Friday. I'd also like to mention about, a little bit about transparency. Recently, the Transportation Department, Transportation Committee had a hearing regarding the Mid-City Exposition Line. Nowhere in any documentation, even before the exposition line was renamed from the, it was originally going to be called the Aqua Line, is there any wording of Mid-City. It's as transparent as a sheet of lead or a brick. We need, Councilman Rosendahl, if you want the Green Line--
Thank you.
Make it the Norwalk Green Line, you'll get it built.
Sharon Brewer in the Valley, please.
A little more warning, councilmember, please. Sharon Brewer, public comment, Daily News, May 15, 2008, "Our Opinion: Wavering on Waivers. LA Needs Clear Policy for Touchy Subject." There's a reason why LA City Council members have been grappling for years with the controversial issue of waiving fees for special events without coming to a conclusion. They just can't win on it. What councilmembers have found is that though on the surface it makes sense to recoup the cost of providing police traffic and other city services to special events, it doesn't actually make sense in many instances. For example, if the city charges every event for all the fees it now waives, how many neighborhoods could afford regular block parties, farmers' markets, fairs, parades, rallies, and other events to build community in this sprawling city? Very few, if any. Article continues stating, stopping fee, waiving all the fees for the events, and suddenly the money will start rolling in, right? Or groups who don't get fee waived will simply close up shop or move their fair, parade, or show somewhere else. The incidental benefit of such events to the city coffers, money spent in LA means tax revenues for a city. Fact. Stopping all special event fee waivers will stop precious general fund dollars from being used for group-specific events. Stopping all special event fee waivers means if a group wants a block party, parade, farmer's market, they need to figure a way to hold it without involving city departments. If the event needs city departments' involvement, find a way to pay for it, charge admission to those attending. Events will move somewhere else if not given fee waivers, then obviously their events are not really for the community. Money spent in LA means tax revenue, city gets money, only if all the people involved in the events pay sales tax or have a business license. Once again, stopping all fee waiver, special event fee waivers immediately will keep millions of dollars in the general fund, takes pressure off of city leaders to pick and choose who gets waivers. Almost 10 years of trying to come up with a policy is too long. Policy, no special event fee waivers. Thank you.
Thank you. Lydia Grant, please.
Hi, I'm Lydia Grant. I'm the education representative on the Sunland Tahanga Neighborhood Council. The reason I'm here today is as a community member, bringing something to the council's attention that may help pay for the police officers that the city needs so desperately. I'm here today, I'm Wendy Gruel's constituent. We'd like to share an idea that we have that may help pay for this. The law-abiding people of the city should not have to carry the financial burden. This plan is low-cost to implement, including, and will include only legislation and signage. What that is, is every LAUSD school, I'll get you guys a copy of this, all the LAUSD schools have a 1,000-foot school safety zone. What I am asking for is it to be considered to double the traffic fines in these zones. Right now, they affect crime, and we're asking that they include traffic fines. We do double fines in construction zones, and this would be a better way to protect our children and would not cost much money to implement. Also, these safety zones could be doubled or tripled, which would also add distance, not only just doubling the fines for traffic, but they could double the fines in a 3,000-foot zone, and that would bring in more money. LAUSD has been contacted, they are very interested in this possibility. This would bring in money for, I understand a portion goes to LAUSD around the schools, so it would bring in money for the City of Los Angeles, money for Los Angeles Unified School District, money to pay for new police officers, make it safer for our students to walk to school, and make the streets safer for all pedestrians. Right now, there's legislation on the books. It is Senate Bill 1666 that grows a 1,500-foot zone around the schools, that's being worked on right now. Let's let the City of Los Angeles be a leader on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheldon Presser, please. Alexandria Turan? Turan? I think it's Alexia. Trying to read that writing. Turan, ma'am? Okay, thank you.
Good morning, good afternoon. My name is Alexia Turan. I'm with the Greater Cypress Harbor Neighborhood Council Board Member, but I'm not here to speak for them. I'm just speaking as a stakeholder. I just recently heard about the City Council going to, or thinking, rather, about taking away the funds of the neighborhood councils. I am hoping you don't do that, because first of all, in my neighborhood council, we just barely have a few cents left, so we have used the funds wisely. We have assisted my community of 16,000 population and also the surrounding communities, so we have done well. We have assisted 501(c)(3), such as the Northeast Streets, in defense of Cypress Harbor Community Improvement Association, which is a veteran site. So please take another look at that, and maybe there are neighborhood councils which haven't spent a penny, those are the ones you might go after, but please do not go across the board and take it all. We're volunteers, you all know that. We just do the work for some of the work that you usually do getting paid, and some of us do it for the good of our community, such as I do. Please take another look at this. We have been successful. All our information is online. My neighborhood council is the Greater Cypress Harbor Neighborhood Council. Large percentage of the population is low literacy skills, low economics. We need those funds. You have the experience that some of us don't. We are, again, just volunteers. Thank you.
Thank you. Noel Weiss.
Councilmembers, good morning. The theme this morning is basically, how long do we have to wait? An unknown author said that excellence can be achieved if you care more than others think, risk more than others feel is safe, dream more than others think is practical, and expect more than others think is possible. We have a problem with regard to the failure of the City Council to debate housing policy over the last seven, eight years. When is the debate going to come? How long do we have to wait? We have a problem with Lincoln Place. Lincoln Place has 38 acres of vacant apartments in the midst of a housing crisis. Aimco itself is, now has it on the books at 190 million, maybe the property's worth 150 million. Jim Hahn just became a mediator. This is an opportunity, perhaps, for Mr. Hahn to give back a little bit and mediate a resolution with regard to Lincoln Place, because the tenant judgments just got reversed in the last month, and now it's the best opportunity to do it, and I would respectfully request that perhaps consideration be given to trying to bring the peoples together. I think Aimco be willing to do it, and the tenants also should be willing to do it, because now is the best time. So that's, how long do we have to wait? How long do we have? Hearing on TOPA? Maybe next week we'll have a hearing on TOPA, because Herb basically made his promise. Educational reform and innovation, Mr. Alarcon promised a hearing last week. It didn't happen, so he didn't keep his promise, but hopefully Herb will. We need to get those reports out of Housing Department, because they were promised months ago, and the Housing Department needs to get their, whatever they feel can't be done, so that we can demonstrate how it can be done to this council, and we can get the debate that we need on moving the middle class and preserving the middle class. And that's essentially the essence of my, so, council, we're talking about policy even on fee waivers. That's what all the Daily News said, debate it. Don't just listen to Sharon Brewer and those people in the Valley. Talk about it, give direction, give, make the policy, let the people know that you're really thinking about what they're thinking about, and that you actually can make the decisions, that we all know that you're capable of making, on these policy issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Noel Weiss. And we're going to go to the San Fernando Valley for Sheldon Presser. Presser in the San Fernando Valley.
Thank you very much. I am on the Board of Directors of the Summit Above Beverly Hills, which is a community, excuse me, of 96 homeowners east of Coldwater and south of Mulholland, and I am requesting that two sections of Coldwater Canyon be repaired. One about six tenths of a mile south of Coldwater, just slightly south of Harvard-Westlake, and the second from the Tree People at Mulholland West to slightly south of Beverly Ridge. This area borders the Second and Fifth Districts. The area directly south of Mulholland suffered a mudslide two to three years ago that led to a significant area of the road popping, causing that portion of the road to be particularly bumpy. Moreover, the bumps in this section of the road may be considered a dangerous condition, leading the city to potential liability in the case of an accident. Coldwater is one of the three canyon roads connecting the valley on the west side, over which tens of thousands of cars drive each day. The status of this road is an embarrassment to the city in that condition. "Our neighborhoods blend together," Councilmember Rosendahl said this morning. That is particularly true with respect to Coldwater Canyon, which is why the City Council should handle it en masse. I realize there is a difficult budget condition at this point, but if there is going to be a Department of Transportation, which is fixing roads, this Coldwater Canyon repair should be particularly high on the list. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, on item number five, we need reconsider that due to amended motion. On item number five, reconsider, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Now, on the amended motion on item number five, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
All right, thank you. Next item, please.
Mr. President, is there any more public comments left?
Public comment is now complete.
Okay. Next is item number one, and that's called special--
Wait, 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 I see some hands in the audience. I have no other cards on public comment. If you're on item number one, that is item number one, that is not, if you want to comment on item number one, folks in the audience, we will take that up under item number one. But public comment was general public comment, general issues that don't pertain to any specific matter on the agenda, and there's no other cards that I have, but if you're here for item number one, we will give you an opportunity to speak on item number one. Thank you. Madam Clerk. Mr. Labonge asked that we move item number 11 forward, a matter with the Police Department, and we have one card on item number 11. So, Madam Clerk, if you could do item number 11, please.
Item number 11 was called special by Councilmember Labonge.
Yeah.
Item number 11, Mr. Labonge.
This is an issue here. Mr. Smith has a concern, I think it will be resolved. Basically, there are institutions that deserve banners on our polls, and we got a request from the Huntington Library that had an exhibit on Los Angeles, only to not be able to allow them to place their banners on polls. This resolves that. Mr. Smith has a request to make sure it's done appropriately, ask for it, Public Works. Our friends from the Huntington are here. I ask for an aye vote. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Do you understand all that? Mr. Smith, we have one card on this. You want to speak or have the public comment?
I just had two requests as this comes forward, because this is requesting more information. Two things, one, that we don't waive fees for out-of-city agencies or organizations, and that, number two, that we had established in the Public Works Committee recently with our Daco contract, certain restrictions on what could and couldn't be said, and it's not just about the Huntington, but we don't know what else will come in, because the city attorney has a point that we have to allow anybody else to do it. So we want to make sure the same kind of standards, restrictions that were written for the Daco contract are extended on these kind of, as well. So I just ask those two things come forward when this comes back.
Thank you. We have one public comment card on this. Randy Schulman. Randy Schulman, you no longer wish to speak on this matter? Okay.
Okay. Mr. President, as per the clerk, is recommended that I, on this report, request the city attorney prepare and present an ordinance amending LAMC Section 62.132 to allow for all 501(c)(3) organizations located within 50 miles of the city limits to announce events administered by such organizations through the City Street Banner Program. I'll give this to the clerk for the document. That's the only recommendation.
All right, no other comments on this matter? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Mr. Labonge, there was another matter you wanted called with the Police Department. Item number six, Madam Clerk.
Sitting here, they want to get back to work. They told me, they're sitting back there, they can't arrest people unless they're doing it. Members, we know we have a serious copper wire theft problem. There's two items before us here on this that require junk dealers and recyclers to comply with additional record-keeping requirements and payment restrictions when purchasing scrap metal. In the 14th District, in Mr. Weisar's district, in the 15th, in Ms. Hans', and other districts as well, significant amount of material has been stolen. Streetlights have been stolen. There were two pages in the 15th District just recently. This effort by Senator Calderon will strengthen a bill to put more teeth in it, because it seems to be a growing matter. Our neighboring city of Long Beach had 17 utility covers, manhole covers from the old term, utility covers stolen for scrap. This has to be stopped, and we've got to get tougher.
Mr. Labonge, if the clerk can read out number six for the record, please.
Thank you.
Number six, please.
Item number six is a CLA Communication and Resolutions, Senate Bill 691 Calderon, require junk dealers and recyclers to comply with additional record-keeping requirements and payment restrictions when purchasing scrap metal.
All right, thank you, Mr. Labonge. You've opened it, we have the detectives before us.
Do you want to add your comments? Detective, Lieutenant?
This is Detective Tom Mann, he's our senior metal theft detective in the city. Just to inform the council, we've now added another detective to work with Detective Mann, so now we've doubled our resources on putting it on metal thefts in the city. We've reviewed both the State Senate Bill 691 and the Assembly Bill proposed, and we support them both, but just to let the council know that the City of LA, the Los Angeles Police Department and the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department are the only two police departments in the state, or major police departments in the state, that for over--
Detective, yeah, yeah.
--that for over 40 years have been proactive in this field. So Detective Mann now has a partner. We're going to have to see how this works out. We don't think we need any additional resources right now. We'll see how it plays out, and we'll go through our chain of command and ask for that if that's necessary. We already do this, but this is just going to put a little more teeth into the enforcement end, and again, we believe this is a very good thing, especially when you look at the Assembly Bill that requires a thumbprint, a check that goes out from the company to the person who is scrapping that material. That way, it creates a trail for us.
Great. And Clay McCarter is here for the Legislative Analyst Office. Clay, a quick brief?
Yes. The 691--
The 691 legislation, it adds some teeth to the law. It ensures that the seller of copper, copper alloys be compensated via check, which can be mailed or picked up from the dealer after a wait period of three days. It also requires the dealer to obtain a thumbprint of the seller to be retained for a period of two years. And SB 691 also increases the penalties for dealers who do not obey the two-year record requirements. Additionally, a person convicted for the theft of junk materials is required to pay the victim for both the value of the property stolen and any reasonable collateral damage caused by the act of the theft.
Well, thank you very much. Also joined by our City Attorney. Anything to add to that? City Attorney, you ready to help prosecute this if this comes to bear?
Absolutely. Absolutely, Councilmember. And we just... The City Attorney's Office hasn't taken actually an official position on it yet, but we expect to do so in the coming week in support.
But the City Council, we hope to support it. Mr. Zine, members, I thank you all, and this is an effort to try to solve it. Detective Mann, I want to thank you because you're the one who looks out for the city of Los Angeles, all the stolen property. Give Detective Mann a big hand right there.
Mr. Labange, there were some questions raised in committee on that. Were those answered?
Yes.
Okay. No further questions? No, was on... Ms. Hahn, Ms. Hahn. Sorry?
Well, I certainly just want to rise and support what we're doing. I think this is very critical. Really appreciate your proactive work on this issue already, but I've always felt like it's at the recyclers' level, at the junk dealers' level. I mean, I think that's where we can really begin to probably, you know, catch those who are doing this. You know, it's interesting to talk about any collateral damage as a result of the copper wire theft. Again, a lot of people wonder, why do we care about that? Well, you know, it is a problem, and it costs us a lot of money, but ultimately, the lights go out. The lights go out when this copper wire is taken out, and we know there are neighborhoods which least can afford having the lights out, and the police will tell us crime increases when it's darkest. So, it's interesting to think about what might happen and what they might be liable for if, in fact, there was an auto theft, or a break-in, or a robbery, or something that happened as a result of people taking advantage of potentially dark street which once was lit. So, I think this will hopefully put everybody on notice that this is a serious crime. It has serious consequences. And I was shocked, again, to get that recent report just in the 15th District. Again, two pages of locations where this is continuing to happen. But we hope this will help give us the teeth, as you said, the copper teeth, to really clamp down on this crime.
Mr. Weezer.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Hahn, I hope we don't get that copper from some of these places where the copper teeth that are being stolen. But I... Thank you for your work on this. Bull Heights was hit hard with this. We had many seniors calling us and telling us they couldn't take their daily walk down the street because the lights were out, and certainly many of them were actually leaving their lights on in their own porches because the lights were out in the street. And I think if this goes through, it would not only give more teeth, but certainly it's going to get to the profit that these people are making. And once we take out that profit and make it not worth their while to go out and steal public property, we will get rid of this problem. So, thank you for your work. We want to also thank Councilmember Labange for keeping his eye on this. He's focused on this issue each step of the way, keeping an eye on it to make sure that we continue to make it harder for these individuals to steal public property. It's a crime. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Labange, one more time.
I vote. Ask for an aye vote. Call for the question.
Call for the question. There's no more individuals on the queue, so we're going to bring this matter before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Unanimous support. Thank you.
Forthwith.
Forthwith. That means immediate. Detective Mann, on the beat. Thank you. Thank you, Lieutenant. Next item, please.
Next item is item number one.
Item number one, ma'am. Mr. Parks, item number one, we have a number of comments from the public on cards.
Mr. Chair, can I make a comment? We've had 52 hours of budget hearings, and one of the things that may clarify the number of public comments, we have about a half a dozen letters for people that were concerned about cuts to restore the park rangers. And I'd just like to comment on page 32 of our committee report. Item 85 restores the resolution authorities for the chief park ranger, the emergency preparedness coordinator, the project assistant, the senior clerk typist, and 17 park rangers. That might resolve their issue. The other one, a letter dealing with a proposed cut in the neighborhood council's $50,000 per year, and the budget did not do that. And so, I'd ask that we, for those who are interested in making public comment, that we give them a minute per person. But those whose issues have been resolved, we'd hope you understand that this has already happened, and it's no obligation to speak unless you want to convince us to change our mind.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. So, if you agree with Mr. Parks, you can just say thank you, and if you have comments, then you can make those comments. So, Mr. Parks, how much time for the...
I say to give each person a minute that feels they have to speak, but those issues on park rangers have been restored fully, and the neighborhood council $50,000 has not been altered. So, if anyone's here on those two items, they've been resolved. And so, if you just...
All right, thank you.
If there's any other speakers, I would suggest we give them one minute, and after 52 hours of hearings, I think it'd be appropriate to give them one minute, and we can get to presenting this report.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. So, what we're going to do is for the public speakers, the cards that we have, when we call your name for, you have a minute to comment on the matter. Item number one, the first speaker will be Beth Cranston... Beth?
Okay. I'm Gail Abarvenell from the Rape Treatment Center, and we're here today because a critical public safety issue is not being addressed in the proposed budget, namely the severe shortages of DNA staff in the LAPD Crime Lab. There's an accumulation of 7,000 unopened rape kits in the crime lab freezer, and every day more are added because the lab does not have enough staff to process them. So, if a woman is raped today, the chances that the DNA evidence in that case will be processed is extremely low. And what it means to your constituents is that in a case like Lori, who was raped by a stranger who broke into her house in the middle of the night, her kit sat on the shelf for many, many months. When it was opened, the identity of the offender was in it, and he was arrested. But during the time it sat on the shelf, two other women that we know of were raped, and actually, one was a child. And this is not unique. We understand there is money in the budget to help reduce the backlog, but the backlog is only a symptom of the problem, and we urge you to add more staff to the crime lab so every kit can be opened.
And ma'am, for clarification, your name, please?
Gail Abarvenell, and probably the second card.
What happened to Beth?
She's here. She's next.
Okay. Well, she want to speak too? Because Beth, I have your card first and Gail's second, so your turn now.
She's my boss.
Oh, well, that's okay then. You use discretion, let her speak first. That was good.
Thank you. Every day, there are violent offenders on the streets of our city because our priorities are misplaced. There are thousands of unopened rape kits in the LAPD freezers that contain DNA that could help identify violent repeat offenders who are now free to roam our streets and continue to reoffend. The problem is critical, and it deserves it. Frankly, it requires your attention before more crimes are committed that each of you could literally prevent. We need a solution to the over 7,000 unopened rape kits from the past, and we need to open every rape kit that's collected as we go into the future. That will... Excuse me. What will it take for this city to recognize its public safety obligation to its citizens? We understand a motion will be introduced on Monday to add staff to the crime lab. It is an incredibly small step, but it's a first step in the right direction, and we ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Zuma Dog.
He has one minute to cover 52 hours. Thank you. First of all, the city's facing a $500 million to $700 million budget deficit. I say the problem is much worse. Please pay attention. I talked to Karen Sassoon, the CAO, and she says that there's $1 billion in accounts receivables that is from the '80s and '90s that you expect to be part of this, and so I'm here to say, do not plan on that $1 billion. It's much worse. Regarding the magic budget dust that they pulled out of a hat yesterday, $90 million, do not start reinstating all this nonessential spending. You just sat here and triple trash collection fees, put a new phone tax, bulky item fees. You're coming up with new revenue streams and new taxes and fees, so do not start going nuts with this because it's much worse. The surplus and the DWP is only a one-time thing, and if you need some revenue, I know Grand Avenue Project, that in the agreement, if they run late, there's late fees to be assessed. They've hit two late deadlines as it pushed. Contact Grand Avenue Project. I'm sure you can get millions out of them for the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zuma Dog. Stephanie Barnett? Stephanie. How about John Walker? John Walker? Barbara Ferris?
I'm Barbara Ferris, Managing Director of Symphony and Glen Free Concerts in Griffith Park, and I'm actually here to thank you. So, I hope you don't mind if I take my minute to do that because many of us came down on the first May. You heard us. You're working with us, and we wanted to thank the honorable members of the council and particularly Budget and Finance Committee. And we want to thank also our council member for the Griffith Park area, Tom Labange. Thank you, Tom, so much. And keep those regional parks going, and there's a little ways yet to go. Please working on... Please work on bringing the money back to the Department of Recreation and Parks for maintenance and some other things. We do thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kristin Sabo? Kristin Sabo?
Good afternoon. Yes, my name's Kristin Sabo. I'm with the Foothill Trails District Neighborhood Council near Hanson Dam, and Wendy Gruel is my council member. Thank you, Budget and Finance Committee. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for restoring all of the positions to Recreation and Parks for the park rangers. We need them. I will say that the return of $3 million would certainly help Recreation and Parks, but they had a $14 million hole in their budget, and so I cannot see them reasonably taking the whole $3 million and just utilizing it for park rangers. So, we do have the opportunity to have some new rangers back, but we don't have all the money required to fund those positions. I know we have a tough budget shortfall in the city right now. But be aware, park rangers are actually integral in the city's emergency preparedness plan, which the Public Safety Committee needs to pay attention to. Recreation and Parks handles emergency sheltering, and park rangers are the public safety component of that. If there aren't enough park rangers, then we cannot fulfill our emergency preparedness plan in the city, and that is a big issue. Perhaps there's money in emergency preparedness or in Homeland Security to fund ranger positions and secure them as opposed to taking it from a regular budget. Thank you.
David L. Marx, please. David L. Marx.
Good afternoon, council. This is about the decrease in funding for our neighborhood council. I'm part of Mid-City Neighborhood Council. I'm a stakeholder. I am project chairman for the Apple Fairfax Planter. If you take this money away, if you decrease it for us, we will not be able to do the things we need and the vision we have to create for this city. Billboards are not the answer to bring money into this city and to make it beautiful. We work hard to get rid of those. We put plants in. We have a vision for Washington Boulevard, and we have a vision for Venice Boulevard. It's this money that we get from the city that helps us do this. Any decrease, you will crush all of the efforts that we have made and done. We have created cross-talking between various departments, which never existed in this city. We have done a lot. Thank you very much. Please don't decrease our funding.
Reatha Simon.
My name is Reatha Simon. I want to thank you for not decreasing the budgets for the individual neighborhood councils, but I did want to speak briefly on the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. There is going to be a decrease to their budget. I do understand that, but I would ask that you would consider lessening the cutting of their budget. One of the things that is primary for the neighborhood councils to succeed is training of the neighborhood council members, and because of the cutting of the done budget, the training has been severely cut. So, if you could possibly consider lessening their decrease, and I especially want to thank our councilmen, Councilman Wesson and Councilman Parks. Thank you.
Coastal San Pedro Neighborhood Council. No name, but that's what it states as the business organization. Anyone here on behalf of the Coastal San Pedro Neighborhood Council? Can I just give your name at the microphone, sir? And we will write your name in.
My name is Bruce Horton.
Thank you.
I'm the secretary of the council. I apologize for not putting my name. Thank you for not cutting our funds. We have a tremendous outreach program at the Coastal San Pedro Neighborhood Council, and I would invite the council to come and participate in some of our events. We have Music by the Sea, Shakespeare at the Park. We put on a Fourth of July show every year at Cabrillo Beach. We don't do this all on our own, but we sure support this stuff. So, thank you very much for keeping our funding going.
Norm McClellan? Norm? Oh, Norma, I'm sorry. Nora, Nora. Trying to read the small writing, Nora, I'm sorry.
You know, chicken scratches. Good morning. My name is Nora McClellan. I'm a resident of Playa del Rey and a member of the Neighborhood Council of Westchester Playa. I won't get into the Neighborhood Council budget thing. Thank you. But one suggestion I have to help your budget shortfall is to sell the five homes in Playa del Rey, which is part of, you know, Council District 11, and these homes are owned by the city of Los Angeles. These homes were purchased by the city 10 years ago due to a failing sewer line that compromised the foundations of these homes. The sewer line has been repaired, and the houses were then rented out. These homes were to be rented for three years and then sold. That was over five years ago. These Ocean View homes are on Delgany Street, Reeves Street, and Zatola Terrace. They can be sold... If they can be sold through normal channels, they could bring in more than $5 million. Rather than giving these homes away through bargain basement deals, which has been the norm, we could... You could use this money. And as a side note, the proceeds of the sale of these homes would be more than... Would more than cover the backlog of the 7,000 rape kits. Thank you.
Thank you. Marion Dodge?
I'm Marion Dodge. I'm president of the Los Feliz Improvement Association, representing 1,000 households in Los Feliz, and we are very happy to hear that the council is considering retaining the park ranger positions. Park rangers provide a myriad of services in the city's 12 large regional parks. Fire Chief Douglas Berry praised the Griffith Park rangers for their critical assistance in fighting the Griffith Park fire. Their intimate knowledge of the park's topography helped firefighters keep the fire from spreading north to the zoo. As you are well aware, there was another fire in Griffith Park yesterday, this one right below the Griffith Observatory. Park rangers provide a first line of defense against wildfires. It would be penny wise but pound foolish to cut their services. Some funds have been restored for the rangers and for the park services, but not enough to provide for the critical public safety that we need. Thank you.
Thank you. Rosemary DiMonte?
I'm from the Greater Griffith Park Neighborhood Council, and I want to thank you for restoring the NC funds. But I'd like to also say that you're... In the... We are now having elections throughout the city for neighborhood councils, and you had decide... With your wisdom, decided that the city clerk should handle our elections, and I was just hoping that... I am outreach, and it's very difficult under this new system to really have a sense of outreach. And if you could, the mayor and the city council somehow have a citywide, you know, appeal to the people that there are elections going on, let them know that they are being held, you know, within the last three weeks of June. It would really help us a lot in getting, you know, people to come in and have some real diversity in our neighborhood councils. And thank you once again. And thank you for the park rangers. It's an important thing.
Thank you. Bruce Horton. Oh, Bruce. Are you the man who filled out the card?
I'm Bruce Horton's alter ego. My name is John Stinson.
All right, John.
I could have swore I signed that thing.
From the San Pedro Neighborhood Council.
Can you hear me? I just want to say that I thought this was Aloha Friday, but apparently I'm in the wrong city. But secondly, I want to say to Mr. Parks and his committee, thank you very much for considering fully funding neighborhood councils. As the treasurer and head of outreach on our neighborhood council, we do a lot with our money. We're not shy about spending it. I know others have problems. But it's no reason to short-circuit the process here. NCs are young. They're developing their ability to do outreach and to reach the public and provide the public a voice to the city. I think it would probably be unwise and politically risky to consider something else with regards to this, primarily because neighborhood councils were started through the secessionist movement in the '90s. So, and I think that, is that it? Okay.
Thank you very much. William Lamar. William Lee Lamar.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, city council. I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Bernard Parks for not cutting the funds. I am a current member of the Mid-City Council and a stakeholder. I own property in Herb Weston's district. And I mainly wanted to say, the most important thing that we need to focus on is our parks. I currently own a skateboard shop, and I represent two other skateboard shop owners in the LA district. And skateboarding is what's helping our kids as far as child obesity, and it's helping with the gang activity a lot. So I really like to thank you for not cutting the funds. I'm working with Kamani Black and Herb Weston's district to actually redo the Rancho Cianica Park. Gil Garcetti just helped do a park over in the Marsh area that I was working at. So skateboards, skate parks, this is very important. It's helping with the gang situation, it's helping save our youth. And I also grew up in Venice in his district, and all those other cities, Culver City, Venice, they all have fantastic skate parks, even San Pedro. We need one in LA. We need one in Herb Weston's district. I'd like to see that happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We could use some more in the valley, too, while you're at it. Ronald Forbes. Mr. Forbes.
I'm Ron Forbes, the North Hills, North Hills West Neighborhood Council.
Put the microphone closer, sir. We can't hear you. We can't hear you.
Get a little closer. I'm Ron Forbes, the North Hills West Neighborhood Council. I'm the treasurer. Prior to the last election that we had last fall, our council really wasn't able to do much. There were the minority of members who were essentially holding the council hostage and not letting anything get passed. After the election, with several new members, things are getting done. We're into a lot of outreach now. And we want to, on behalf of our council, we want to thank the Budget Committee for maintaining the current level of our support. Thank you.
Thank you. Honored Sacks.
Good morning again, council members. Thank you very much. In this latest editorial from Sunday, the Daily News, 5/11, 52 hours of budget hearings. I guess in the 53rd hour, you'll discuss salaries and cutting of your salaries and maybe some rollback for the $3.5 billion that is spent on the payroll for the 48,000 municipal workers of the city of LA. That comes to about $73,000 per person who works in the city of LA. You kind of like stuck your foot in this. You should, we're waiting. We're waiting to hear what your plans are to roll back, to address the salary outrage that occurs in the city. The fact that all these people are making this exorbitant funding as public employees, it's outrageous. And 52 hours, this is the 53rd, time's ticking. Thank you for your time and answers.
Sheri Marata.
Good afternoon, council members. I represent the North Hills West Neighborhood Council. I did want to thank you for maintaining our budget. It's very, very helpful. Did want to thank Councilman Smith for his support of getting our council back on track. And Megan has been so instrumental in moving us forward and helping our outreach committee understand goals and how to make our community better. And we really thank your office, and we thank you all. Thanks.
Thank you. Cherie Safrastine Johnson.
My name is Cherie Safrastine Johnson. I'm the treasurer of the Mid-City Neighborhood Council. I'm in Herb Weston's district. I want to say thank you for maintaining the budget and take this time to invite all the council members to the gathering tomorrow, which is an event put on by the South LA region of neighborhood councils. It's going to be at the West Adams Preparatory High School. It said that the council members will be showing up, so I'm hoping to see all of you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Lydia Grant. Ms. Grant.
Honorable City Council, Barbara Monahan Burke, 4223 Wilkinson Avenue, Studio City. I'm a board member of the Neighborhood Council of Studio City. But speaking personally, I want to thank you for continuing to support the Neighborhood Council's budget because it's essential that we do not have to fundraise to supplement budgets. It's really important that we be beholden to nobody, that all stakeholders can have fair access. So I thank you all for your support.
Last name of Salcedo. And I can't read the first name. Last name's Salcedo.
Just good afternoon. My name is Bambi Salcedo, B-A-M-B-Y. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. And good afternoon, council members. I am here before you to speak on a very important issue that regards many Angelenos. And that is the budget cuts, the proposed budget cuts from the city. It was proposed that about 50% of the Human Relations Commission was going to be cut. And I am here to speak on behalf for you to please fully fund this project. As we know, $1 million is really not enough to cover the needs of all Angelenos. But the Human Relations Commission has done a fantastic job in meeting some of those needs. There must, there's much that needs to be done in our city. And the Human Relations Commission gives empowerment to our communities, specifically those that are marginalized.
Ma'am.
And I am here to speak on behalf of the gay, lesbian, bisexual, and transgender community.
Ma'am, your time is up.
And I implore you to fully fund this program. Thank you.
Thank you. To the valley, Sharon Brewer. Sharon Brewer in the valley.
Hi, Sharon Brewer. Item number one on the budget. Didn't see anything about the policy on the fee waivers. A suggestion for the Office of Finance is to change the policy about a business being required to have a business license only after doing business in LA seven days in one year. Businesses putting on an event annually could make thousands, if not millions, of dollars and pay no business tax. So I would suggest you look at the, some of the major events that are here, because that would be money that could be generated. When it comes to the NC funding, I understand that the $50,000 hasn't been cut the annual. But I really think that neighborhood councils should not have a total of more than $100,000 for two years, and that any money over the $100,000 should be swept, meaning that if you had $65,000 now and you're getting $50,000 in 7-1 for July, that $15,000 ends up getting swept back into the general fund. Also, thank you for the rangers, but where are the rangers for, on the Spalvada Basin? Thank you.
Thank you. Not here. The next one is Peter Stir. Peter.
I'm an off-duty park ranger here on my off time, and I'm also a resident in Council District Number Two. I just want to thank, I want to thank everyone for restoring the park ranger positions. And if there's any additional funding, if you could put it in the park ranger budget, that'd be great. I was the incident commander yesterday on the fire in Griffith Park. And I, we pretty much used every resources, all of our resources available to us, all of our personnel, calling up people at home and bringing them in so we could battle this fire. And we were able to get the fire knocked down pretty quick. And once again, I just want to thank everyone for supporting the rangers and supporting the, keeping the budget. And one idea that this lady had earlier was doubling the fines around the schools. Probably a good idea, maybe, to double the fines in the parks for people that speed through the park near the Chones Play Area and some of the picnic areas where a lot of families visit. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker on this matter. I think it's Laberton. Last name, Laberton. And the first name, I can't read. Is that you, ma'am?
That's me. It's probably Denise. Denise Labertu.
Thank you.
So my name is Denise Labertu. I'm here on behalf of Peace Over Violence, which is a rape crisis center serving victims of sexual assault as they begin to heal through their process. Thank you. We really were here because we really appreciate the efforts of Councilmember Weiss in focusing on the issue of, on the backlogs of the rape kits. We really also would implore the rest of the city council to prioritize the rape kits by really funding criminalists in the crime lab. When a victim is sexually assaulted, not only does she have to experience the initial sexual assault, but then evidence is collected from her, which is a necessary second trauma. But then when these rape kits go untested, it becomes a third trauma that we can actually do away with. So again, we implore you to put public safety and sexual assault as a priority in your budget and to really focus on developing the state-of-the-art crime lab through criminalists. Thank you.
Thank you. Perfect timing. That concludes the public speaker, Mr. Pa, Ms. Gruel.
Thank you. Well, I just wanted to add and thank Mr. Parks for his leadership as chair of the Budget Committee and to thank all of you that were here today to testify. And want you to know that the emails that all of us on the Budget Committee received and the calls and letters were very instrumental as we were going through and talking about some of the issues that were most important to our neighborhood councils and others. And just wanted to add that as we begin Tuesday, excuse me, Monday, on the whole dialogue about the budget for the entire city council. But it was 52 hours, I think, our CLA said, we spent here. I've used that number in a couple meetings this week, and they've all been impressed by the fact that we spent 52 hours on that. But I just wanted to say thank you to the public who stayed to testify today, and that will be part of our discussions and issues that we have on Monday. Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you. Mr. Parks, do I believe, close?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Basically, colleagues, Monday's set up for a full day of budget hearings. The report has been given to you from the CLA. We just draw your attention to a couple of things that I think are significant to you. Look at the rest ofations. We've listened to your offices. The community has come in, is dealing with whether it's human relations or whether it's for park rangers, whether it's dealing with funding for libraries, books, alleys, whether there's more funding for sidewalks. These are issues that were constituent concerns that you've expressed, the community expressed. We also think you should be very attentive to parts of the budget that deal with the issue of the $81 million dealing with the transfer of funds from pensions. The committee did not want to get into that situation of deferring payments. So we found a way not to defer. We did not want to impact negatively projects that were already in place dealing with the parking fees. There's a variety of things that you should take note of before we get back here Monday. Certainly, there's some fee increases that deal with parking tickets. There's also some, eventually, some fee increases to deal with parking meters. So all of those issues would be of concern to you. For those that were here about DNA, the committee asked the CAO to go back and evaluate what the balance is between hiring people versus going out to outside vendors and getting these samples done. Certainly, for the neighborhood councils, roughly, as people are worried about losing funds, at July 1st, it is conservatively estimated that there'll be over $10 million in the fund for neighborhood councils. Many of them will be well over $100,000 or somewhere between 100 and 150. So there is a need for them to look at ways to expend that money as opposed to letting it sit there. The other issue of fee waivers, that's a conversation. The fee waiver policy for convention centers is currently in Budget and Finance Committee, and we soon should get special event fee waivers. So early on in the fiscal year, we should be addressing those issues. And so I give you this in the sense of looking at this for Monday. We'll give some guidelines on how we will address the budget, much as what we've done the last couple of years, is go through page by page, pulling out specials as we see them, going through the whole report, approving the remaining items on consent, and then going back and discuss the specials. I would also caution you that if there are items that you believe you'd like to change, we absolutely need a funding source because this budget is wound very tight. Anything you move costs money somewhere else unless you've created additional revenue source. So those are things that are important. We'll also do, as we've done the last couple of years, is motions that are for information and such, we'll get them to committee, get them back during the fiscal year. But we will try our best not to disassemble the budget and re-budget during this session on Monday. So I give you that, and hopefully, as you study it, you'll see much of the time and effort, and although I'll do it more formally Monday, I want to thank the CLA's office, who I think has done, in my time here, the most remarkable job in the sense of pulling this budget together in the shortest amount of time we've ever given them, and also digging us out of some holes that we did not think we could get out of. And so I just want to say thank you to Sharon, and Lynn, and Jerry, and all of the staff for their efforts. And so I give you that, and we present it to you, and we'll start, what is it, 10 o'clock Monday morning.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. So this matter does not require a vote? Madam Clerk?
Close your round.
Or does it require a vote?
No vote.
No vote? Okay, fine. So we're done with that. Mr. President Garcetti, you have matter number six.
Thank you very much.
From Wednesday's agenda.
Mr. President Zain, I'd like to reconsider item number six from Wednesday's agenda, Council File 060705-S1, the patient dumping ordinance, because we need to change the maximum fine in there to a different number.
So we open the roll on reconsideration?
Please.
Tabulate the vote?
We're going to get a first vote.
Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Now that's before. I would move that the ordinance be amended to change the maximum fine to $1,000. And that's been done. Apparently, we had the wrong number. So in conjunction with authors and everything on that, I would move it as amended.
And the ordinance has been distributed.
Yep.
As amended on that item from Wednesday, number six. Open the roll on the amendment to that matter. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. Thank you.
Clarify.
It's approved on first reading, there'll be a second reading.
Just to clarify, that's been approved now. Okay. Thank you. So anybody who's showing up for a second reading, there won't be. Fourth with, please.
Fourth with on that matter. And our next matter on the agenda.
Mr. President, just to clarify, item number one is continued to Monday at 10 a.m.
Yes. Item one is continued to Monday.
The next item is item number four, and that was called special by Councilmember Labange.
Mr. Labange, number four. Mr. Labange. Mr. Labange is enjoying his lunch.
No, no, I just had a bite there, Dennis. Forgive me. Call the next one, and I'll come back after that.
All right. We'll come back to Mr. Labange on that. Hold that on the table. Next item, please.
Next is item number 13, and there are cards.
Number 13 item, Mr. Zuma-Dog.
Two minutes on the clock, please. Two minutes on the clock. No, that's okay. I'll just use one minute. Thank you. This is item number 13, and it's a city's position for an outdoor environmental education recreation program. Now remember, when we talk about spending, there's never a good reason to make a cut because it's always the warm and fuzzy issue that, gee, we just can't cut this. It says here, "Award grants to formal school programs and nonprofit community groups that provide..." provide outdoor and recreation opportunities." Well, I'd like to say that until you start to do so, I don't think we should be spending more grant money because of the nonprofits. A lot of fraud, waste, and abuse, as you know, in the nonprofit programs. So some things I'd like to do before we start handing out money, first of all, where's the money from? But until you do that, first of all, City TV 35, a very effective medium to achieve the type of education program that you're trying to achieve. Also, council members, why don't you call in some radio stations like Zumadog does all the time? I'm ready to run for mayor between my City TV 35 appearances and radio station callers. I say I'm a valid candidate for mayor at this point. Why don't you use the mediums? They're free. Also, public access TV and the Internet. So here's some ways you can save money, and I say don't spend a penny because all these nonprofit groups, it says right here, nonprofit, I shouldn't say all, but I'm concerned that a lot of them are just rackets, as in racketeering, as in RICO violations. And I bet if we did audits into a lot of these nonprofits, a whole lot of people would be behind bars, and we need some accountability. So before we start handing grant money out to nonprofits, I'd also like to know what type of accountability will there be for this money? And I say that you should do more as council members to try to persuade the community for this education that you'd like to do regarding outdoor environmental education programs. Use your positions as council members to try to get some political heat on this. So basically, why don't you just start being activists like me and Noel Weiss and Lydia Grant and Miriam and everybody else, and maybe you can achieve some of the goals that you want to hand the public money into shady nonprofits for. Zumadog, Zumatimes. Thank you.
Mr. Zumadog, you said one minute, you took two minutes. Item number 14. Madam Clerk, next item?
Next is item number 14, and that was, there's a card on this item.
Mr. Zumadog.
Four.
Zumadog, number 14.
Womp, 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 womp. Decision goes to Zumadog. Special event fee waivers. Please put number 14 up there so the people at home watching for the next item up for bid on the City Council Price is Right. It is special event fee waivers, and I'd like you to check the Daily News. Finally, after two years of people like Zumadog, Noel Weiss, Miriam, Lydia, all the people, Sharon, Donna, we've been talking about special event fee waivers, and they finally did a front-page story on the Daily News. And basically, when we have a $500 million budget deficit, this is no time to be spending money on frivolous dog and pony shows that are not supposed to be. Now, let me clarify for the record because there's a lot of people that say that, gee, we need some of these, gee, they should cut them all. This was initially intended for small community groups trying to get like a bake sale or a little bingo thing, or, you know, something in the community to try, open to the public for public benefit of community good. And so, you know, the city makes you have to maybe have some police or have some trash removal or whatever afterwards, and so the city says, "We'll waive that for these small community, open to the public, free events." But then it's mutated into something else where, before you know it, you're handing $50,000 over Dick Clark for his American Music Awards, and a lot of money is being wasted. So it looks like we're going to have to concede and allow things like the Academy Awards and Emmy Awards. The city says we need to waive, we still need to continue to waive those fees because they're such a big revenue generator. So Zumadog, even though I say you should not be using the special event fee money for Academy Awards and Grammy Awards and things like that, I will concede that as long as everything else throughout the year, none of this shady, fraudulent, corrupt racketeering, fraud, waste, and abuse bamboozle into the nonprofits. As long as you cut back on the rest of that, then I say we'll have a deal here. Thank you very much. Thank you, Daily News. Zumatimes.com.
To the Valley, Sharon Brewer on item number 14.
Sharon Brewer on item number 14. By the way, you didn't vote on item number 13. Special event fee waivers. We have 12 total, 11 with amounts, $123,448, one to reimburse. We have one for $51,479. It's for the Cuban American Music Festival. They expect 30,000 people. $51,479 divided by 30,000 people equals $1.072 each. We have one that's July 4th, $29,516. Palisades Americanism Annual Fourth Parade, 5K and 10K race fireworks. $29,516 divided by 20,000 people, which is what's expected, equals $1.048 each. We have May 26, $16,125 for the 20th Annual Canoga Park Memorial Parade, sponsors the Canoga Park West Tills Chamber. Again, when it comes to these events, the events themselves are good. Find a way to not have the city departments involved in them, and if you do, then find a way to have the event paid for without using the city funds. Again, the special events have gotten out of control. Just having totals of $123,448 for today is just not acceptable, and to hear that they're not going to be dealt with until next year is really not acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please. Mr. Labonge was holding number four on the table.
Vote on 14, and then we'll go back here.
14. All right. Open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay. Now we've got Mr. Labonge.
Just on four members, this is directing our Personnel Department to really look at the issues as it relates to hospitals throughout Southern California, not just those in the city of Los Angeles, but those that are adjacent cities or region, to give a comprehensive study on what has happened. We know the tragedies of King Drew, but many, many others have closed over the years and what is projected in the future. This is, will be a comprehensive report so all of us could know. Ask for an aye vote. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to open the roll on that matter? Close the roll, tabulate the vote?
Ten ayes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next is item number 17, and there's a card on this item.
Mr. Zumadog. Mr. City Attorney, Mr. Zumadog has a card.
He does have five minutes already.
One minute, I'm begging you. It's for the city.
Mr. Zumadog, your time is up, sir. Thank you. No time. You extended your time, and thank you, Mr. Zumadog. Next item, please. On that matter, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next matter, please.
Next is item 21, and there's a card on this.
Item number 21, Arnold Sacks.
Thank you very much, Arnold Sacks. With all the hand-waving going on last month regarding the DWP's request for rate increases, I'm hoping that any agreements that you enter into regarding anything that DWP is involved in would require that there's an audit of their infrastructure update. I believe that last month with the funeral for the fireman who got killed out by Los Angeles Airport because of the shoddy wiring that Los Angeles has 12,000 miles of, I'd just like to know that somebody's stepping on, stepping up the DWP and making sure that they're staying on top of their infrastructure repair. I believe last month I spoke about the fact that the three major utilities in California are going to spend like $17 billion on new smart meter boxes so that they can control your electricity usage a lot easier, and they will be able to eliminate the employees that come out and read the meters. That's not why spending for infrastructure. That's the kind of thing you need to step up to. If DWP gets involved in that, then the wires and the story behind it was just a lot of smoke and mirrors, which surprisingly wouldn't be that new occurrence for the city of L.A. Thank you for your time and your answers.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Open the roll on that matter. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item, please.
Next is item 24, and there's a card on this matter.
A card from, on 24, Mr. Zumadog, and his time is up. So on that item, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next is item 25, and there's a card on this item.
Item number 25, Arnold Sacks and Noel Weiss on item 25.
Yes. Good afternoon again, Arnold Sacks. I don't know. I could have sworn on your last meeting that there was an item on your agenda regarding a motion by the mayor or veto for $210,000 for attorney nine law firms to assist in litigation. And here, you come again in front of the city council, and a law firm is asking, or you're asking, the redevelopment agency wants to increase a purchase order $59,000. Why don't they hire one of the nine law firms that you were going to spend $210,000 on? That's like $20,000, $25,000. You could save $35,000 right there. What's going on? What part of no don't, doesn't the city departments understand? The mayor wants to veto $210,000, so let's veto that, and let's go out and get an agency to spend $59,000. A big, big thumbs up on that routine. I guess, open the roll, close the roll, 12 votes. Thank you for your time and your answers. Oh, excuse me, Mr. Weiss wants to talk.
Mr. Weiss.
Thank you. Councilmembers, we really need three noes on this because what it's going to do is it's going to send a message that the city council suddenly is going to care about the dollars. Because if you're asking the people of the city, and this is more for the people watching than the people that are here, but if the people of the city are going to vote for things like partial taxes or to tax themselves more, they got to know that the city council is now going to be a little bit more selective as far as how this money is spent. Now, this $57,000 is going to a connected law firm, Bob Hertzberg's law firm. What is the $57,000 going to be used for? Basically, to clean up a lawsuit where there's already been $377,000 paid. What's the city's liability as it has been adjudicated? $14,000. So we're going to have $470,000 spent to save the city $14,000. And I don't know why it should take $58,000 to file, to oppose an attorney's fee motion and to quote, "clean up." The case is over. I don't know where this money's going to go, but this is basically people watching how City Hall works because some of this money, I wouldn't be surprised, will end up getting recirculated back into campaign contributions or this, that, or the other thing. I'm not saying that it's necessarily illegal, unlawful, untoward, or whatever. But the bottom line is, I think it's, when we're talking about reality versus principle and we're talking about kind of the rubber meeting the road, I think it's important that there be some kind of debate, some kind of disclosure, some kind of information to the public so the public understands why the city is spending $477,000 on a case where the exposure was only $14,000, and there is nothing, virtually nothing left to do that would just, other than oppose an attorney's fee motion that the billboard companies are now going to have to file, which justifies the payment of anything along these lines. So that's my pitch. Three votes, no, or continue it, or do something. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes. Ten ayes. Thank you. Next item.
Next is item 26, and there's a card on this matter.
Yes. Mr. Weiss.
Thank you. This is, again, another little education on how City Hall works on the inside, a little bit more situation here. What we're talking about here is a developer, I'm sure a very great developer in Herb Weston's district, and it's a, I'm sure, a great project. But what the city's doing here with this money is $250,000 to just, to basically bail out the developer, or not bail out, but basically reimburse, it says, the developer for the costs of its pre-development activities. Meanwhile, if I went to any one of you and asked for $250,000, if it was your money, you would say, "Well, okay, what's the project? What are you going to do? How much is it going to cost? What, where's your pro forma?" None of that. The report before here says the proposed pre-development loan is two years, 3% interest. Not a bad deal. However, there's, this also says that the feasibility of the project has not been evaluated, and it says, quote, "Because of issues related to the feasibility of the project, the exact number of units, and the income mix has not been determined. Consequently, the pro forma projection of costs and sources of funds has not been available." Again, this is a situation where we need, not the same old, same old, you want some reform and innovation, you want some thought, maybe compel this developer to try to come up with some other creative ideas so that maybe two years from now, if this project still doesn't pan out, because they still don't have any numbers, what's going to happen? So net-net, we're talking about a bailout of a developer with $250,000, not a bailout, but basically reimbursing them for their land costs. Why is that happening? I don't think there's been adequate evaluation of that, and I think it's part of the problem with how City Hall runs. And if you guys want the support of the people, at some point, there's going to be a turning point here. I don't know where it's going to be, but it's going to overwhelm all of you unless you begin to change a little bit the way you guys do business on this stuff. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item 26. Close the roll and tabulate the votes. Ten ayes. Thank you. 28 had been called special by a card from Mr. Zumadog, but his time had been allotted. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item 28. Close the roll and tabulate the votes. Ten ayes. Thank you. Next item.
Next, there are motions for posting a referral.
Those will be posted and referred.
Madam President, there are excuses on the desk.
Yes.
Councilmember Han requests to be excused on May 19th for city business. This meets policy.
Ms. Han will be excused?
Councilmember Cardenas requests to arrive at 11:45 a.m. on May 21st for city business. A motion is required.
Mr. Smith moves. Mr. Rosendahl seconds.
Councilmember Smith requests to be excused on September 3rd for city business. This meets policy.
They have to be excused.
And that clears desk.
Yes. We have announcements, colleagues. Yes, Mr. Cardenas, followed by Mr. Labonge.
Yes. As was mentioned earlier today, the Israel Independence Day Festival will be held, as it is annually, over at the park on Woodley Boulevard in Victory. It attracts sometimes as many as 15,000, 20,000 people. It's a wonderful event. It's very well organized. And again, Israel Independence Day Festival will be on Sunday, and the exact time is from 10 a.m. to 10 p.m., again, this Sunday, May 18th. And also, I'd like to say hello to my wife. As usual, I'm working on our anniversary, 16 years of being married. My wife isn't on the camera right now, but I wish she were here with me, but I'll hopefully be home at a decent hour today after work. But again, happy anniversary, Norma. Many people think that I'm very lucky when they see her and meet her and say, "Wow, what a wonderful wife you have." Yes, she is wonderful, and when you get to know her, as I have, you know that I'm very, very blessed. Thank you.
Mr. Cardenas at the risk there. My wife is watching this. I don't want to be outdone. I know, I will hear it if she, I don't say, we celebrated our ninth anniversary two weeks ago, and I too am very blessed to have gotten to know her and to have met her in my life. Thank you very much. Happy anniversary, Rochelle.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weezer. On Wednesday, Bridget and I celebrated our 20th anniversary, so every day's a blessing. Tomorrow, we're having a cancer walk. My wife did recover from cancer at John Marshall High School for the American Cancer Society to raise funds. It's 24 hours, so if you want to stop by and walk on the historic lap, and as I introduced her earlier today, Annette Cordova will be our grand marshal, the famous actress from Greece, which was partially filmed 30 years ago at John Marshall High School. And located at 3939 Tracy Street. Thank you. That's the engineer, the great graduate of San Fernando High. It's right there at Griffith Park Boulevard in St. George. And members, also later in the day at Calegian High School, Jose Weezer's alma mater, the Los Angeles Police Department Centurions will take on the L.A. City Fire Heat in a benefit football game at 4 o'clock at historic Calegian High School in Buller Heights. Wonderful afternoon for activity to support the LAPD-LA Fire for a benefit football game.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge.
And happy birthday yesterday to brother Bill Rosendahl.
Bill Rosendahl.
In fact, brother Bill Rosendahl, who turned 63 yesterday, was celebrating with the the rest of the gay and lesbian community. Talk about anniversaries here, our ability to get married, and we thank the courts to allow that, the lines are forming. I've heard some of my colleagues were asked already to officiate at weddings coming up, but it was a great day, not only for me being born, but for my community and I to finally get our basic civil rights as humans, and it's gonna get more serious when November election comes along, but we're standing firm, and we know Californians are gonna do the right thing and protect our basic civil rights. Just while we do anniversaries for Mr. Cardenas and Mr. Weezer, I had to make that comment. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal.
Nice birthday, President.
A very nice birthday, President.
I think it's important for all people, all people to find joy and love. So yesterday's ruling was extremely important for the people of California, but for all people who are celebrating, let's remember and have good thoughts.
Nothing better than love for everybody. Thank you.
Right, exactly. I love you, Bill.
Love you too, Tommy.
That's a special moment in Los Angeles. Colleagues, are there any adjourned motions? Yes, we do have adjourned motions, we ask everyone to please rise in the council chambers.
Yes, it's a sad thing to tell you this, but the other day at the Marchesa Knolls Homeowners Association, I bumped into my old friend Sidney Galanti, who's been quite a community activist and leader, and he shared with me the death of his lovely wife Joan, which happened earlier this year, but for the record, we need to appreciate who Joan Rachel Galanti was. A resident of the Palisades since 1966, she passed away at her home in January from post-surgery complications. She was only 72. After being diagnosed, in fact, they were high school sweethearts, and their life was inseparable together. After being diagnosed with premalignant pancreatic cancer, Joan tried very hard to recover following a Whipple procedure performed last September. She was a courageous fighter and an inspiration to those who knew her. Born March 18th, 1935, in Bloomfield, New Jersey, Joan married Sidney Galanter, her childhood sweetheart since the ages of 15 in 1954. The couple and their two children moved to Los Angeles in 1966. Joan and Sidney had a wonderful, full, beautiful life, raising their kids, working and traveling all over the world. Besides being a typical mom, Joan attended Antioch College and became a practicing marriage and family therapist in 1988. In addition to her private practice, she was a supervisor and counselor at the Southern California Counseling Center for more than 15 years. Joan was an amazing person and had profound effects on everyone she met. As I mentioned, she survived by her husband Sidney, her son Mark, and wife Caroline, who lived, by the way, in the Canals, and he's a leader in his own right, Mark is, his daughter Beth, husband Michael, and grandchildren Matthew, Jack, Melissa, Lam, Evan, and Emma, and her brother Herbie, and wife Marcy. May she rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Yes, Mr. Alakon.
Yes, members, I'd like to ask Mr. Cardenas to join me in a journey, as well as all of my colleagues, of course, in a journey in the memory of Antonio Mercurio of Lake Vitoria. He died at Kaiser Permanente Hospital and was the father of Raoul Mercurio, who is the owner of Raoul Pharmacy on the corner of Saticoy and Lancasham in Mr. Cardenas' district in North Hollywood. Antonio leaves his children Raoul, Eduardo, Margarita, Maria, as well as his sister Rosa, and eight grandchildren and four great-grandchildren, and we are, we are sending, we would love to send our condolences to the family for the loss of their patriarch.
Thank you, Mr. Alakon. Any adjourned motions? If not, yes, Mr. Labonge.
Real quick, 10 years ago this day, my mother went to heaven, and I wanted to remember her. I'm meeting all my brothers over at Calvary right now. Every day's a blessing for life. Mary Louise Labonge, God bless all mothers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. This meeting is now adjourned.